Good evening. Thank you all for being here this evening. We're happy that we have Boy Scout Troop 263 with us this evening. So while we're doing roll call, I'll ask the boys to come up and start to get ready. They're going to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Here. And we have Boy Scout Troop 263 coming up. We're happy to have them with us. We've been fortunate to have many scouts start coming to our meetings during their work, earning a Community Service Government Badge. And if you all will rise, please.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, young men. So to start, I will have the city attorney. We did have a closed session to begin with, and I'll have the city attorney explain.
The city council met regarding discussions for labor negotiations. No action was taken. And finally, the city met regarding the outstanding Half Moon Bay versus Insurance Company for State of Pennsylvania case, and no action was also taken.
Thank you. We're happy tonight because we have the Half Moon Bay Beautification Committee and our Half Moon Bay Parks and Rec Committee are here to make a presentation to us. This is all good stuff, so I would like to ask for the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation, for MacDutra Park, to please come up. And we have Mr. Kobelson.
What a pleasure it is this evening to be donating to this worthy cause here. About two and a half years ago, Friends of Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation was formed exactly for this type of activity. We've got something, we've got a need in the city. We're happy to be able to contribute to it. Thanks to the Pearlstein Foundation and John Muller, who was kind enough to head them our direction with the startup money for our foundation, for our nonprofit. We've got $10,000 that we're going to be presenting to the city to go toward the fountain there. We also are looking forward to working with the city on other projects, as the Carter Park Stairs, and we've even got some funding started for a new swimming pool at the high school. Thanks to Alex for all his hard work to put all the pieces together for this, and Steve and Chris over at Kikuchi in landscaping. We've been through quite a few meetings, and I think this is a great improvement to our downtown area. Thanks to the Half Moon Bay Beautification Committee for allowing us to participate in their efforts here. And just to close, I want to thank the city council for allowing, Friends of Half Moon Bay Parks and Recreation, for allowing us to make a splash on Main Street. Thanks so much.
Thank you, John.
You've got to go receive that.
I'm happy to take that. Yeah, he said. And this is a nice check for $10,000, so thanks to the friends. And how many of the friends are here tonight for Half Moon Bay Park and Rec? Is that Charzad and yourself? Thank you very much. And we'll take a picture and, okay, we'll take a photo, and then we'll get ready because we do have Half Moon Bay Beautification Committee also has something they want to give us. So I'd like to invite Cameron Palmer up to the podium on behalf of the Beautification Committee.
All righty. Thank you. I just want to follow up on what John said. Good evening, my fellow council members and Mayor Fraser. Thank you so much. My name is Cameron Palmer, President of the Half Moon Bay Beautification Committee, and I am thrilled to be here tonight along with my Half Moon Bay Beautification Members, Vice President Naomi Patridge, Mel Mello, Treasurer, Chris Mason, Secretary, my fellow board members, Heidi Kuiper, Kathy Lorente, Joe Borges, and our fellow member who has been our founding member since day one, Ms. Beverly Ashcraft. So I'm very honored to be here on behalf of my committee members. As many of you know, our committee was instrumental in the original purchase of the building of MacDutra Park in the 1970s, under the guidance of our founding member Dolores Mullen of the Pumpkin Festival Committee. As time took its course, it was obvious to us that it was time to remodel this park. It needed a big facelift, and here we are. Throughout many of the years, we've had public meetings, at least the last three years that I can recall, and the assistance of Steve Kikuchi, Associate, and guidance from Tom Conroy, we have had a final new park approval, which we're all excited about. Our Half Moon Bay Beautification Committee is extremely proud to make a contribution along with the city of Half Moon Bay and others towards the remodeling of this important city hub, or shall I say, the new plaza, MacDutra Plaza. We're very proud of that, and I think it's something that all of our kids can appreciate for years to come. At this point, I would like to ask my Beautification Committee members to come up as we could present a check to the mayor, to the city, for $100,000, if we could. So if I could have my committee members, please join us.
So not only is that a big check, $100,000, it's a big physical check.
Yes. Yes. It's a big physical check. Let's get in photo op position if we could here. Yeah, let's join the mayor. Yeah. She's the mayor. Okay, I will. So folks, on behalf of our committee to the city of Half Moon Bay for hopefully many, many years to come, here's $100,000 towards the remodel of MacDutra Plaza. We're very proud of you that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Alex. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the city staff who helped shepherd this through over the years. Alex was particularly helpful in helping us do this. So thank you, city council. We're very proud to be part of this community. We love you. Good luck. Love Half Moon Bay. Take care.
All right. Is there anyone else that wants to give us some checks? This was good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, if I may, so.
Very sorry. Point of order. Our Treasurer, Melva Mello, would like to hand you a very small check, which may clear the bank. Did you do that?
Cameron, I already grabbed.
You have that? Figures the mayor grabbed the small check. Okay, great. All righty. I didn't think the bank check would go through there. Thanks.
Oh, yeah, we got it. Thank you.
The mayor actually got that out of Mel's pocket before Mel knew it was out of his pocket. Part of mayoral fiscal responsibility. But I want to thank both Parks and Rec for their generous donation and Beautification Committee for their gigantic donation, both in spirit and energy to our community, helping, you know, you really live up to the name of the Beautification Committee, not just in the physical things you help bring to our community, but the spirit you bring to our community. So thank you for that. Thank you for your donation. I think the plaza is going to be remarkable, and I'm excited about it, and thank you for helping making it happen.
Thank you. Great. Council members, do you have any announcements? I don't have anything to announce for the weekend. All right. And if not, can we have council reports? I'll start off with Councilmember Reddick.
So we had a sewer authority Midcoast side meeting last Monday. The city's team to attend these meetings is myself and Councilmember Koalcek. Councilmember Koalcek was traveling, and Councilmember Muller sat in in his place. And it was a lively meeting, as lively as discussions of sewer system might be. We did agree to spend $10,000 on initial legal services to get the ball rolling on the recycled water project. And there was an item on the agenda to form a subcommittee to work with the neighborhood on the Keough Water Course issue, but we deferred for the time being and have asked the attorney for SAM to prepare a technical and legal memorandum on the constraints on using the Landstra property, which is the property just to the east of the sewer plant that might be used for various alternatives to handle the drainage and erosion that the ditch currently faces. And I'm not thinking of anything else. Can you think of another item that we might have?
I think we're continuing to pursue recycled water project.
Yes, we did advance funds for that. Oh, and it's now public knowledge that the general manager of SAM, Rob Hopkins, has resigned his post after serving less than a year for personal and family reasons, understandable personal and family reasons. So there's an existing ad hoc committee to look at hiring. We're currently in the process of hiring a new engineer, and this subcommittee, including Vice Mayor Koalcek, will be, you know, setting terms for a new general manager and issuing, you know, a request for resumes and things like that. So we just went through it, and we're going to go through it again, and hopefully we can at some point soon reach some sort of stability at SAM in terms of the management. There's great staff there, it's just the management has been transitioning fairly frequently, so that's a problem that we'd like to solve going forward. Other than that, I don't have much to report from the meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Muller?
Yes, it's been a busy 10 days or so, believe it or not. We just don't come to this meeting. So on February 19th, attended the 75-year anniversary for RCD, which was very well-attended. Everyone from the county and state legislature was there and staff. And then on the 23rd, again, as an alternate, went in on SAM. And again, Member Reddick did a great job trying to continue to share and defend our Half Moon Bay opinions on items on the agenda, and I think SAM will have some challenges regarding staffing. I think one of the staff members are in the audience here today. We have to learn the plant and the system and try to get that all put in the right perspective, so each member agency understands what's coming and where's it going and how's it treated, I believe.
I just want to add that the budget period for SAM, much like the budget period for city council, will be coming up with workshops beginning in March.
And then, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, good. I kept going here. And then, and this was for you, on February 24th and staff, the State of the City address was well-attended, excellent presentation by the mayor, and accomplishments and along that line. And then on Thursday of last week, the Chamber of Commerce had their event with the teachers and with Hasec Hardware participating with school supplies. And we did have to waive a $100 bill to get up to the front of the room, but you got up there, and I believe they raised over $8,000 for teachers that night.
That's awesome.
Yeah. Eighty-eight hundred, almost $9,000. And, yeah, it was definitely more than last year. So that was quite an event. And then on Friday night, I had council of cities in Redwood City at the Fox Theater, and Redwood City is just booming and expanding, and you talk about general plan work, let me tell you, they're doing a lot of development in Redwood City, which is very positive for their community. And probably learned more about the arts that night than I really wanted to learn, with all respect to Redwood City. We had our Chinese New Year's, we had theater with La Mesa, we had singers, we had storytellers, and then we had the Latino community dancing, and then we had expert of the Art Commission continually explain the whole program of art and what they've done in their community, which is very creative, and it's something maybe we could even look at, particularly maybe one or two buildings on Main Street that are vacant, where they brought artists in to display their artwork, which was kind of creative way to do it. And I think that was a good suggestion there. And so learned a lot about art, and we had a very lively evening there. They even encouraged all the council members to get up and dance, which fortunately I wasn't called to do that at that time. And then on Saturday, again, my wife was wondering if we ever stay home anymore, but went to the Hall of Fame Dinner for the Cougars at the high school out at Oceana. Huge turnout, just huge, and great award ceremonies to longtime graduates and more recent graduates, and it was pretty spectacular evening, and so it was a very lively group out there. I guess they must add, close to 300. So I've been attending functions, and that'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Councilmember Muller. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes. I attended a mobility subcommittee meeting and was taken on a field trip with Dante to look at proposed changes to Highway One, which, the area running from Keough down to where South Main enters Highway One. And there were a lot of good ideas there and a lot of possible changes at different intersections, so that was very informative. I also attended a Rexon Parks meeting where Ms. Pantera's group made the decision to have our Cinco de Mayo celebration at the Johnston House and the train depot there, which should be lots and lots of fun. It sounds like there are all sorts of fun things going to happen. And big participation by the Friends of the Johnston House Foundation and as well as the Latino community, food vendors and dancing and mariachi bands and all sorts of fun things. So they're about to get started on advertising for that. I'm hoping everybody in town will attend. It sounds like a great time. Let's see, I went to something, oh, yeah, I went to a planning commission meeting where they made the decision to adopt changes in the architectural design for the substandard lots on Church Street, the corner of Church and Kelly, where there'll be two buildings, each of them having two separate units in it, with housing on the second floor and business space on the first floor on the street, and two-car garages and parking out back. So that was very informative and interesting. And I think that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Koalcek?
Thank you. Just a couple of things to report on. One, I had a couple of meetings with Latino Advisory Council and worked up a number of plans and recommendations for the May 3rd concert in the park that will be held at Johnston House, as Councilmember Penrose mentioned, and do have some great things planned. So it'll be May 3rd, and so we're continuing to work with Parks and Rec for their event and to support that in any way we can. But there are some food vendors and music and some children from our community performing are all planned on being part of that. So the thing we're emphasizing about the event, and I'm happy that Parks and Rec Committee embraced the concept of community with a capital unity. We really see this as an opportunity, another opportunity for us to come together from all parts of our community and to unite and have a wholesome and a good event together, really feeling the need for that sense of unity and to grow that and encourage that. So that's a big premise behind that. So thank you, Charzad, for all your work in that regard. And then traveled out of the area and attended an event with a group called AIPAPA, which is Asian Pacific Islander American Public Affairs Association, for their Lunar New Year celebration. And it's interesting because among all the speakers, some names we know, some of our friends, Fiona Ma was there, Betty Tye, John Chang, some folks from Sacramento were all there. They know Half Moon Bay, and it's very interesting. I was asked a number of times from a couple of them, like, "Tell me the story. You guys came back strong. What's going on there?" And it's really encouraging to hear that from outsider area, people hearing that good news, and when the state comptroller's asking you, you know, "What's going on in your city financially?", yeah, that's pretty cool. So really appreciated that, and so tried to represent us there and told our story. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I did attend some of the things that have already been mentioned, but I was fortunate to be asked by supervisor, Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Carol Groom, to attend a women's leadership panel, and this was to encourage young women to be involved in boards and commissions and go beyond PTAs and being Little League mothers. So it was really well-attended, and it was a good group of people that were interested in doing more. I've also attended a sustainability program to help businesses with recycling and different opportunities, and this is through Recycled Works, and I believe they're going to be a part of our Earth Day celebration, which we'll have in the city hall parking lot on Earth Day in April, along with a lot of other opportunities to learn more, as well as the composting will be back again this year. I know that was really popular. Just to mention on the Cougar Hall of Fame out at Oceana, this was the third time they have done that, and it was, the majority of them were in school about in the '70s, with the exception of some of the older ones, so it was somewhat of a reunion. But I have to say that former mayor and councilmember Naomi Patridge was inducted into the Cougar Hall of Fame, and she has also been nominated and chosen as District Woman of the Year for Assemblyman Rich Gordon. That's a celebration that's taking place next week, so for all her good works, a body of good works, Naomi has been recognized. Well, one of the interesting things I just want to note for the Cougar Hall of Fame, all of the kids, first, they thank their families, they thank their parents, they thank their communities, because if some of you weren't around here in the '70s, this was a very small place, and we were considered a small school, and our school was like the underdog. I mean, they laughed at us, they used to call us old farmers, and it just inspired these teams and these individuals just to show them how great athletically they really were, and that was the start of winning a lot of championships. And the people that were inducted into that were the start of, they were the first ones to win for their team. But every one of them thanked their community for being a part of it. And one of the oldest, Guido Santini, who was a great baseball player, could have gone pro, but he had stayed at home to work on the farm with his father. So who's about the oldest? One of the youngest, Gina Maganini, had referenced, her very first job was working for him at The Farmer's Daughter. So it was a great connection throughout everyone. One of the highlights of the last week, and many of you will be interested to know because it's on the agenda, the Pillar Cedas Bridge along the Coastal Trail. Last week, myself, city manager, Magda Gonzalez, and deputy city manager, Alex Kudikian, we went to meet with the acting director of the state parks, just to encourage them to give us a little more help pushing things through, because we do have that small window of time. That bridge has to be completed by October 15th of this year, or we have to wait again. So we've got all our ducks in the row, we've just got to be pushing all these agencies. And the acting director was very positive about what we've done and noted that the city is much more nimble than the state is at these things, and so that is why you've got this agreement on there tonight. So it was a very, very well-done meeting. Very excited to be there, and I'll leave it at that. So we'll have a city manager update, which will talk to us, I think the city clerk is going to talk to us about the Public Records Act process, and then we'll have an update on the Seymour Bridge.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I've got a couple of reports. However, I'm asking to ask for help from my friends, and I'll start with the city clerk.
Okay. The best part of me giving a presentation is me trying to flip the slides and speak at the same time, so. Oh, actually, look at this. The vice mayor has agreed to.
A letter to Navy.
Thank you very much. So as part of the city's efforts to continually improve our communications with citizens, I've been asked to provide a brief overview of the city's process for responding to public records. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Public Records Act in general, the city's process for responding to records, the number of records requests that we receive. We'll talk a little bit about the importance of submitting clear and specific requests and how the public can go about doing that. The cost, the very minimal fees that the city charges for providing records, and then I can answer any questions that the city council might have regarding our process. The California Public Records Act is a section of the California Government Code. It's section 6250 through 6270. It mandates disclosure of governmental records to the public upon request unless there's a specific reason not to do so. In 2014, the city of Half Moon Bay received approximately 100 complex records requests. In 2015, so far, we've received about 25, so I think this year we're right on track for that typical number for us. Just to get a feel for whether our numbers are typical, I did check in with some of my friends in city clerk's offices in San Mateo County. The cities that responded back to me, the average number of requests received by them in 2014 was 65 in a given year. The responses ranged from some small towns like Coleman and Brisbane, who received five to 10 requests a year, and some of the larger cities like Redwood City receive about 140 requests per year. So our number of 100 is actually near the top of that range. Only two other cities in the county replied with a number of 100 or over of complex records requests. And just quickly, those are requests that I use, I differentiate between the real simple requests that we get for a staff report or an agenda, complex ones are more records requests that require research or, you know, going into offsite records, those kinds of things. So our number's a little bit more than average, particularly given the size of our population. We've got to involve citizenry. The city's process for requesting public records is outlined on the city's website. There is a form available on our website, hopefully entitled Request for Public Records Form. We ask that you use this form if at all possible. It's not a required thing at all, but the form helps us to track records and be able and be able to get in contact with you and know that we're responding to your requests. But you can also make a request to the city via email, on the phone. People drop in, ask for stuff. But using that form that we have on the website and also at the front counter at City Hall is probably the most efficient way to make sure that your records request is going to be responded to. And that form just has some basic contact information and a description of the request that you're looking for. The next step in the process after you fill out the form or give staff a call is to forward that request, that form to us. Our contact information is on the city's website, too. And then upon receipt of your request, staff will provide a response to you within 10 working days. Please note that a response may be your requested record or it could be a notification from the city that we need additional time there. We have to compile records from offsite. We have to scan things. We have to do some research. So but within that 10 days, we'll either get you your record or we'll let you know the reasonable timeline for providing it. And again, additional time that, you know, things that would cause for additional time to be required would be coordinating with multiple departments. Sometimes a record might touch Finance, Public Works, and the City Manager's Office. So there's some coordination that goes on there. And then we may have to scan or copy documents to get them to you. Okay. So requesting an identifiable record. The biggest challenge that staff faces with a public records request is actually not locating a record. It's identifying exactly which record you are seeking. So I came up with a few examples of how to and how not to properly word a records request. So this here is, hopefully, yes, a great example of a properly worded request. It's clear, it's easy for staff to locate it, and we can get it to you right away. Won't be probably much of a delay in getting your record because we know what you want and we can get it to you. However, an example like this up here is problematic for staff. All kinds of questions come up when you see a request like this. Which road are you referring to? You know, what constitutes a road project to you? When did it take place? Was it current? Is it something in the past? So a request like this, you are going to be getting a call from the City Clerk's office saying, "We want to help you. We want to get your information, but we need more information." So that will delay the amount of time that you might have in getting your record because there's going to be this additional step and process that we'll go through to get the information. And then another area that I think might be confusing to people is the difference between a request for a record and request for information. But up here on this slide for Pillar Cedas Creek Bridge, this is an example of someone who's seeking information. It's not a single identifiable record or a series of identifiable records. This is more somebody wants to know all about a project. And so in those cases, it's not something that you would submit to the public record, to the City Clerk's office for public records. It would be directed to a staff member who is working on that project and is probably the subject expert on it to get information. And then I put this in because these are the head-scratcher requests that we get only occasionally. The City Clerk's office likes to have fun as the next person, but sometimes we get things that are just puzzling. For instance, the following. "I saw an article about a small town discovering that a copy of the Magna Carta worth millions in their possession. That prompted me to wonder, what if we have our very own Magna Carta and we didn't even know it? Please provide me a copy of any original Magna Cartas that the City of Half Moon Bay is in possession of." We were unsuccessful in finding that record. But we tried. We tried. Next slide is providing the record. Depending on the format that we maintain the record in, we may give you an electronic copy of it or a hard copy or, you know, we'll work with you to get you the format that you prefer. And the city charges very minimal fees for records. The only things that we can really charge for at this point are photocopies. So we have a 22-cent-per-page photocopy charge. Otherwise, the fees are regulated by the state and typically, it's just photocopying. Oh, God, that was fast. Okay, that concludes my presentation. I hope this information has been helpful to the council and to the public. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. And also, the Deputy City Attorney is here, too, if you have some more complicated things that you'd like to know about. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. Councilmember Mueller?
I will be brief. I'm just, is it public information on who is asking for requests? Number one question.
So are you asking, is a request for public information a public record?
The name of the individual.
Yeah, that's a public record, yes.
It is a public record. Number two is, can anyone from outside the city, from Nebraska, request public information to a city?
Yes. We don't get a lot of requests from Nebraska, but if we did, we'd happily reply to them.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilmember Reddick?
Yeah, so how many staff would we have assigned to respond to a request? Like, is it just yourself or do you have help? Do sometimes managers and departments assist?
Yeah, I mean, the requests come into the City Clerk's Department and that staff right now is myself and a Deputy City Clerk. We coordinate that effort and we will typically be the office that will provide you with your record. But it often requires research from other departments, time for staff to pull records, photocopy records, get them to us. Emails, yeah. It's, yeah, we, a lot of records get touched by numerous members of staff, not just my office.
I would also ask, is your PowerPoint going to be on the city's website as well? I mean, I think it helps for people to actually see those points that you enumerated as part of the process. I think very useful.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
And perhaps the legal citations, again, the code, just so people could access that if they wanted to.
Yeah. As part of this process, we looked at what we had on the website and determined that it was probably inadequate for the public to really get a feel for it. So we've redesigned the information that's there. And I'm happy to put that, my really exciting PowerPoint up there, too.
And do we also include, like, charges for copying or whatever?
Mm-hmm. It's a 22-cent-per-page charge. And that is on the revised process that we have available on the website.
Great. Thanks.
All right. Good job. Thank you. City Manager, tell us about the Seymour Bridge.
I'd like to just thank the City Clerk for that presentation. We had a council member ask for that. And I think it's good information for us to just remind ourselves and the public about how people can access records. And we, again, as the City Clerk said, we want to provide the information as much as possible and be as transparent as possible. So thank you for that. The next item is the Seymour Bridge update. As you know, the staff has been watching that area and that bridge for some time. And I'm going to ask the Community Development Director to provide us a little bit of an update of where we are with that because we've had some change since the last time we came before council.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Excuse me. Seymour Bridge has been on our radar for quite some time. The City Council allocated some money in the 1415 budget for us to do some studies and look at what we can do to resolve the erosion issues at the, at the bridge or at Seymour Creek. In addition to that, we have actually been measuring how much erosion is happening. So in case we needed to take emergency action before the bridge failed, we will be prepared to do that. And so we are approaching things on two tracks. One track is kind of the long-term permanent. What do we do about erosion long-term? We have met with Coastal Commission staff to review some of the methods that we're talking about. And we also will be meeting with our partners today. We had a meeting with Coastside Land Trust, who owns property on one side of the creek, and will also be meeting with the county. So that's for the long, for the long term. For the short term, we put stakes every three feet to really monitor the erosion that's happening and how quickly it's happening. And we did a measurement on December 23 of 2014 and did another measurement in February 24 of 2015. And the earth had eroded about four feet. And so at that rate of erosion, we will likely need to do something more immediately before the next rainy season. So we are in the process of evaluating what that something is. One option potentially is to replace the bridge and put it further inland and also deal with some of the erosion factors. Another option is to essentially just create a footpath around the creek. But something needs to be done. We have to evaluate that. And we'll come back to you as soon as we can with feasibility of doing or undertaking some of those other things. Long-term strategies of just reducing the flow velocity or redirecting the flow is something that will be undertaken. We're planning for it this year and undertaking within the next couple of years. So that's essentially what we're doing, short-term and long-term. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that update. Will this be coming back to us soon as a part of a staff report? Because I think you've got some, some good alternatives and maybe just not putting a new bridge over there. It's all part of a trail. Maybe we can look for something.
Right. So what we want to do is come back with cost. We want to meet with our permitting agencies to see what's feasible. We want to talk to our partners, Coastside Land Trust, the county, and others to see what the best approach would be. And then we'll come back to council soon with options for you guys to consider.
That'd be good. Councilmembers, any comments? Or you look for the report coming back to us? Okay. Great. Thank you, Dante, for that update. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dante. If I could, I'd like to have our Deputy City Manager, Alex Kajikian, also provide an update on the electric vehicle charging station. As you know, it went in very recently. And we've got really exciting usage and news.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Kajikian, Deputy City Manager for this great city. I'm just happy to report here, we had a ribbon cutting back on February 4 of last month regarding two electric vehicle charging stations adjacent to City Hall on Kelly. And I'm happy to report that in the first three weeks of it being open to the public, over 100 vehicles have charged at the station. Just to give a little perspective, a little cut in the timeline, on President's Day weekend, when pretty much everyone had that Monday off and there was a lot of traffic out here, over 25 cars charged on that Saturday and Sunday. And then just on that Monday, over 10 cars charged as well. So as you can see just on the PowerPoint that I have before, ChargePoint is a mainstream electric vehicle charging system, and they're all across the Bay Area. And I'd like to point out just to the westernmost beacon, if you see on the coast in the map, that's Half Moon Bay. So that's hopefully attracting people to shop, dine, and stay here as well. So I just want to thank the City Council. And we're seeing good results so far. So thank you.
Thank you, Alex. And just want to say, we do have it on a consent. But want to make note that, thank you, that was Rick that really had brought this forward and saw the value of it. And as you can see on that map, you know, to have a charging station, it's been great to see the little cars out in front. So we are going to dedicate that space to make sure that only EV charging is happening and with changing the code. So we have a little teeth in it in case anyone else just randomly parks there. Councilmember Reddick?
Yeah, and State Parks now has a program to start installing EV stations in their, in their parks. And some have been installed, I can't remember where. I think it might be North Coast. But you're going to see more and more of them on state-owned property. So that's kind of exciting, too. And I noticed today, there was a bill introduced the last few days that's going to streamline permitting of the stations and also require local stations to comply with certain state standards. So it'll be interesting to see what happens to that bill this year.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, you touched on it briefly. Vice Mayor Walczek was trying to sell us on this for a couple, three years. And Saturday night, when coming home from the Hall of Fame Cougars, someone was parked in there Saturday evening, too. You know, and so I thank you for continuing to pursue that because it looks like it's being pretty active there. Even some non-electric cars are parked there. That's going to change.
That's why we're changing out ordinance.
So, so thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I, I hope what this means is that next time, my harebrained ideas will go through faster. So, but they, but, so the idea behind the charging station is great for our community. It's good to promote our community. It's the right thing to do environmentally. It's just all good things. And now we're, we're on the map, literally. So this is good. And I think we just, in fact, I have some friends coming to town this weekend. And I'm encouraging them to bring their EV. And they know right where to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes City Manager updates. And we'll go now to public forum. And first up, we have three people who seems like they'd like to come together. Apolonia Cortez, Maria Gutierrez, and Josefina Osaguer. Would you please come up?
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Apolonia, and this is Josefina and Maria. And I'm here the same again. I just want to somebody who translates what I'm saying. Mi nombre es Apolonia. Somos miembros de un programa que se llama Toyota Familias Aprendiendo.
My name is Apolonia, and we are part of a program called Toyota. It's Toyota.
Families Learning?
Something Learning. I forgot. I missed that word. I can't, I can't read my writing.
Yes, Toyota Families Learning.
Toyota Families Learning. Thank you.
We were here. Estuvimos aquí la vez pasada para apoyar a que se nos concediera una biblioteca nueva.
We were here at the last meeting so that we were trying to encourage the realization of a new library.
Y el grupo como estamos, como estamos aprendiendo en familia junto con nuestros niños, entonces parte de nuestro trabajo fue ese que todos los niños hicieron unas cartitas de agradecimiento para todos ustedes, que muchísimas gracias por el empeño y la dedicación que nos dan.
Since the program is for family learning with our children and our families, one of the projects that we did is to work with the children to write thank you letters for all of the work and efforts that you've had, that you, the council made in order to make the realization of a library.
Muchísimas gracias porque el haber aprobado una nueva biblioteca para nosotros va a ser algo muy grandioso. Es el futuro para nuestros hijos y por qué no hasta de nuestros bisnietos.
So we want to thank you very much for the new library, for approving that. Because a new library for us is going to be something really special, very, very grandiose. It'll be something that will be carried on for our children and hopefully also for all of our grandchildren.
Incluyendo para que este programa continúe pues también necesitamos el espacio porque ahorita estamos en la escuela cuña es a donde recibimos parte de las instrucciones. Pero ya que vamos a tener más espacio en la biblioteca pues se va a usar también para eso.
And also for the program that we're participating in currently, we're meeting at Cunha School, although it's a library program. And with the new library, we'll have more space available so that we can have similar programs as this.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias. Thank you for coming. You can leave that, that with us. We'll, we'll take care of that. Thank you. Gracias. Our next speaker is Pam Fisher, followed by Joan White. Big checks and lots of poster boards tonight.
No poster board here. Hi, my name is Pamela Fisher. I live here in Half Moon Bay. And I also wanted to address the issue of the library in, you know, reaching out to a lot of mid-coast people. I know TJ Gothier. I have an enormous amount of respect for him and his matter of opinion in the Half Moon Bay Review. The only concern that we consistently are hearing is that people in the mid-coast are extremely concerned about access to this library. We know that, at least, I know the school district, it's an eight-mile trip. And unless you are a retired person and can travel during the day, after 3 o'clock in the afternoon, it is a challenge. And on weekends with visitors and the amount of traffic. And on weekends with visitors and the amount of traffic that we have, the accessibility for mid-coast is really seriously questionable. So, the question arose in terms of had other models been looked at in terms of two smaller libraries, one in El Granada and one here in Half Moon Bay? Again, parking is still an issue. I think with all of the activities that are going to be centered regarding Boys and Girls Club in that area, that remains an issue. So, and the funding also remains an issue. I'd vote for it. I'd rather pay more taxes to have the, you know, the advantage of having a 21st century library close to us here in Half Moon Bay. And I think there are a lot of like-minded people. So, the question is, is this really the most practical decision for the entire coast site? And again, I think the funding that was agreed to was really a fear measure, a fear of putting it out to the voters in terms of not getting it passed and then having to deal with those negative, you know, with that negative outcome. There are a lot of us, though. I am an educator. I value libraries. I think that where it is, it will also be able to meet community needs. But again, this does not seem to be really the best plan for the entire coast side. That's that issue. The other issue I want to bring forth was that I attended the fire board meeting, and they are basically voted to procure a piece of land without doing proper SEQA analysis on the land prior to purchase. And SEQA is very, very clear. This is English, and it does state that when you're using public funds, you must, you shall, complete a SEQA analysis before the purchase of the property. This is English. There is no mystery here. The board did go ahead, however, and agreed to close escrow on this piece of land. It's like you or I agreeing to buy a home without an inspection first. We can only hope that this land is buildable. But remember, these are our first responders, and to not err on the side of caution or to be faced with more building costs because of existing water on the property is of grave concern to all taxpayers. So, I'm just bringing this to the front so that there's a little more public exposure about what is going on, on the fire board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. And up next is Joan White, followed by Alan Alafano.
My name is Joan White.
You can push the button. Thank you.
Press the button.
You're good.
Oh, okay. My name is Joan White. Three weeks ago, on the internet, Neighborhood Watch or Neighborhood something had a thing, oh, be here because the city council is going to be here to discuss the traffic. Three people showed up. I kept watching the internet, and I didn't see a change about, you know, how this was going to be changed. At last minute, change. So, I came down, another couple from the golf course came down, and I said, I said, I just found out there's no meaning. So, basically, I live in Sea Haven. And basically, what we are asking for is, you know, in other words, you don't have to rebuild the whole city. What you have to do is use our, you know, our sheriffs and like the people on Grandview and Sea Haven, give them a chance to pull out because it's become horrible. People literally speed up if they see you want to get out, just to a safe way or newly. I've been suffering with this problem for quite some time, especially when I saw the amount of building that was suddenly happening here. And I thought we had passed a building moratorium because of the water situation. Am I right or am I wrong?
Ms. White, we don't respond at this. We'll take your comments, and someone will get back to you.
Oh, really? Okay. And my other, yeah, so that was a question I really had, is why something would go around on the internet? Everybody look and then not be able to find out anything? Yeah, the traffic is crazy. It's really crazy. We don't want a signal, but the people at Grandview and the people at Sea Haven need to be considered. And we think like if we had a sheriff or somebody out there to slow the traffic down so that we wouldn't have to wait for the Frenchman's Creek light before somebody decided to let us out. Because that is indeed what is happening. My next issue is the library. I remember we voted in, what was it, November? And the no vote was the winner. And so, I'm just asking you, we voted, we voted no. People didn't want to pay any more taxes. My son, who lives on the golf course, he's tired of paying taxes. And, you know, his taxes are huge. And.
Mrs. White, you're a little bit over time here, and I think you have a lot of questions. I don't have your phone number or your email on here. I'm going to have staff get that so we can talk to you about some of your questions and correct some information.
Well, my other issue was the library.
I understand that. And we can get some information to you, too, as well as your other questions that you have asked. So, I'm going to ask staff to get your phone number and your email so we can contact you and get some information corrected and give you more information. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you for coming here.
Thank you.
And the last card is Alan Alafano. Ms. White, there's someone behind you there. Thank you, Alex.
Good evening, members of the council, mayor, staff. I think it's important, we don't, I don't think the council hears often enough the good things that are happening in town. It's always the issues, the problems. And it took me, I listened earlier about Mac Dutra and so forth. It was very interesting as I thought about all the things that are, have happened in the city and are planned to happen of how many positive things are going on. You start off with the Boys and Girls New Gym across the street, a double gym. That's basically getting financed by a lot of private money, which is amazing. That's already gone through the planning commission, and it's on its way to happening. The new city skate park, which is planned for next door. The revisions you heard earlier to Mac Dutra Park, which is right in the heart of downtown, that's a great thing. And to see again, private money of $100,000 coming to the city is really impressive. The electric charging stations, I remember when that first came up, and people made a lot of fun about that. And it's interesting to see how it's proved to be something so usable in our community. And I clearly think we're going to need to see more of those in town. The plans for the new library, and I'll get back to that in a minute, but that's a real positive thing for our community. The potential replacement for the John Hernandez Bridge, the Pillars Cetus Creek Bridge, these are things that maybe six months, a year ago, the city wasn't even sure it could handle. And now, the city and with the state's cooperation is well on its way to making it happen. And the continued progress on updating the general plan, such a critical document for the city. But as you listen to all these projects, they sound wonderful on the surface, but there's always issues with the details, whether it's community input, whether it's financing, whether it's parking, SEQA, whatever it is. But I think what the community really needs from the council is ways to find, ways to make these things happen with the community's input. Find ways to resolve the issues, no matter what they are, whether it's financing, parking, SEQA, there are answers. And I think it's a responsibility of our civic leaders to find these answers with the backing of the community. So, in summation, I think it's really positive. It's really good to see all the things happening. And we all have to accept the fact, nothing is, nothing good ever happens easily. There's a lot of issues. But it depends on what's your outlook? Is it positive or negative? And my hope is we're going to continue to see a positive outlook, and we're going to see these things happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public forum right now, and we'll move to consent agenda. And city clerk, there was something that was to be pulled. Is that correct? Am I wrong?
I think number eight.
Is there, is there an item that's going to be pulled? Okay. I'm sorry, I'm wrong. So, it's one through four, yes.
I move to approve consent items one through four.
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
House Member Reddick.
Aye.
House Member Mueller.
Aye.
House Member Penrose.
Aye.
Yes.
House Member Fraser.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move now to item number five. That's ordinance in public hearings, and we'll introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 10.36, stopping, standing, and parking certain places and purpose of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mayor Fraser. Reed Galogly, deputy city attorney, reporting on the proposed amendment to the Half Moon Bay Parking Code. To make it short and sweet, as you alluded to earlier, the city was fortunate enough and successfully unveiled two new EV parking spots in order to ensure that those spots are not jeopardized or used by vehicles which are not taking advantage of the purpose of that station, such as charging their vehicles. There is two separate amendments that would be proposed to the parking code. Under the vehicle code, local municipalities have great, great power regarding regulating the stopping, standing, and parking of vehicles on all of their streets. There's even a specific section of the vehicle code regarding the parking of electric vehicles. However, that specific subsection only applies to electric vehicle charging stations that are in parking lots. Ours are on the street, thus the requirements that we're putting forth here, specific to the city of Half Moon Bay. All the requirements do is impose a two-hour limit and allow the violators who park there without charging their electric vehicles be fined. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer all of them.
Counsel, any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 10.36, stopping, standing, and parking certain places and purposes of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code.
It's been moved. May I have a second?
I'll second.
It's seconded. Roll call, please.
House Member Reddick.
Aye.
House Member Mueller.
Aye.
House Member Penrose.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kallcheck.
Yes.
Mayor Fraser.
Yes. Thank you. And along the same lines of electric vehicle charging, we have number six, adopt a resolution amending the fee schedule to include the EV charging station fees.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Alex Kohegean, deputy city manager. The item before you is to adopt a resolution amending the fee schedule to include electric vehicle charging station fees. What we have today is free charging as we speak right now until we can, this council decides what they want to do as next steps regarding a fee you guys choose this evening. Currently, the cost to the city is 20 cents an hour, one of vehicles being charged. What we're looking at is a total fiscal impact that is estimated to be neutral or minimal, minimal net positive impact. We're looking at having a dollar an hour fee, and this would help cover any type of city admin costs from city staff and also the installation costs. So, over time, hopefully recoup that, and there might be a little bit of positive impact for the city. What we did is we surveyed 18 different stations throughout the Bay Area, and some go for being free, others will be free for the first hour. And then, at the peak, I know Portillo Valley, they charge $4 an hour after that first free hour. And then, it's as minimal as 50 cents per hour for other charging stations. The survey was for Level 2 charging units, and that's exactly what we have out front at City Hall. And this concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any comments?
I think this is very fair. And all of us have parked in Burlingame recently. I put $4 in the meter yesterday for just parking a car, not getting charged. So, I think for a dollar an hour for a charging station is a fair price, in my opinion.
Do we have any idea what the state is planning on charging? Or is that still?
The state's regulations, the current bill does not talk about charging at all. It talks about, you know, installation and, you know, location and that sort of thing and permitting, streamlining it so that, you know, cities are encouraging it. But I didn't recall seeing anything about pricing.
Thank you. Well, can we can always, we can look at this now and then if there's, we don't want to be more than the state, and we have to make sure that the state doesn't charge people to go into the park to do it, too. So, that's probably going to be discussed.
Right. Yeah, I was just talking about that bill that was just introduced, not the installations at state parks. But yeah, you have to pay to get into a state park, and then you can park, use it for free, but you're still paying five bucks or whatever.
Good question. So, if there's not any other comments, I would like to have someone entertain a motion.
I move to adopt a resolution amending master fee schedule to include fees for city-owned electrical vehicle charging stations at the rate of $1 per hour.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
House Member Reddick.
Aye.
House Member Mueller.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kallcheck.
Yes.
Mayor Fraser.
Yes. Thank you. We move now to item number seven. This is adoption of the 2015 to 2023 housing element. And we have a PowerPoint. It looks like Dante and coming up to talk to us about this. And Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor. The adoption of the housing element was originally on the agenda in December of 2014. And at that time, the council requested additional time to review the document and make comments. A council work session was conducted on January 27th, and there were no additional questions or issues raised. So, tonight, we have Sophie Martin from Diet &amp; Batia, who will lead us through the discussion and the adoption of the housing element. Sophie.
Thank you very much, Dante. And good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Sophie Martin with Diet &amp; Batia Urban and Regional Planners in San Francisco. We are the firm that is helping you prepare your general plan update and as part of that, an update to the housing element. I have a brief presentation for you. The last time that your council saw the housing element was back in the summertime before we submitted it to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So, I'm going to begin with just a very brief refresher on what goes into a housing element, what the state tells us needs to go into the housing element. We'll touch briefly on the process in which we developed some new programs, go over our review of the element with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, which is a required part of this process. The planning commission did consider the housing element back in November, and we'll go over their recommendation and finally move to your action. To provide some background information for the council and for members of the public who may not be familiar with it, the housing element is one of seven state mandated elements of the general plan. Includes policies that provide opportunities for development of housing that can serve all income levels, from very low income all the way to above moderate income. It also aims to remove constraints to housing production that members of the development community, either for or nonprofit, may encounter. It is the only element that is required to be reviewed by the State Department of Housing and Community Development for compliance with state law. And unlike other general plan elements, which the city may update at its discretion, the housing element must be updated every eight years. It must also be consistent with other general plan elements, despite the fact that it's on this different schedule. So, Half Moon Bay is in a slightly awkward position right now, as many cities often are, of having to update their housing element before the update of the rest of their general plan proceeds. So, after that concludes, you'll probably go back to the housing element and just ensure that it is consistent with everything else that you have approved. that it is consistent with everything else that you have approved. State law is very specific as to what the housing element needs to contain. It includes an assessment of housing needs of the community, population, demographics, employment information, income, how much people are paying for housing, and so on. It also asks us to look specifically at the housing needs of certain special needs groups, for instance, the elderly, the homeless, single parents, for example, farm workers, those needing supportive or transitional housing, and groups like that. We also take a look at the city's inventory of available land on which housing could be built, and what resources the city has available, both physically and financially, to support housing development. We also look at constraints to housing production in Half Moon Bay. Those are governmental constraints, which are things that theoretically the government can do something about. That, an example of that might be your permitting process, or fees that you impose. And then non-governmental constraints, which we have less control over, and those include things like availability of financing in the private market that might make it easier or more difficult for people to purchase a home. We also review the existing housing element. Since we do do them every eight years, it's an opportunity to go over what programs have worked well in the past and should be continued versus which ones may be obsolete or were unsuccessful for whatever reason, and gives us the chance to introduce some new programs and actions to address currently identified housing needs. We also identify what's called quantified objectives over the eight-year period, and that is an identification of how much housing the city hopes will be produced during that time period. It's important to distinguish that while the city needs to demonstrate that it has available land resources on which its regional housing needs allocation or arena could be produced, the city does not actually have to produce that housing. It's just a matter of showing that the land and the resources are available should others come in and want to develop here. That's something that every single jurisdiction needs to do, and Half Moon Bay is no exception. And then finally, there is the set of goals, policies, and programs. We've been working on the housing element update for approximately a year. We began almost exactly a year ago with a community housing forum, which we had good participation from members of the public and various groups representing housing service providers, affordable housing developers, and others that helped us identify what was working well here and what they would like to see improved in the future. We had several study sessions with both the Planning Commission and your council, in which we reviewed proposed changes to the element, heard what you would like to see included, and what you'd heard from the public that should be included. We submitted the draft element to HCD in August. They had a 60-day review period. They're allowed to have a 60-day review period. We also prepared a secret document, in this case, it's a negative declaration, that was also available for public review for 60 days. We went over HCD's comments on the element. Thankfully, they were very minimal, and I'll touch on those in just a moment. As Dante said, the Planning Commission considered the, the housing element back in November, and while it was originally on your agenda to consider the element for adoption in December, that was deferred, and here we are today. So, as I mentioned before, a very important step of this process is going back through and looking at the policies and programs that you have on the books, and seeing which ones should be carried forward and which ones should be removed. Were your programs effective? How well were they implemented? And what could we add that would respond to new challenges that the city is seeing from a housing perspective? Those that were removed were things that the city accomplished or that were no longer relevant or deemed feasible. Programs that were added or substantially rewritten are those that were needed to address new needs that surfaced as we did the research, similarly, new constraints that you may be encountering, streamline the city's approach to implementation, and also ensure compliance with any new state laws that were introduced since the last time that the element was addressed. Our approach to amending existing programs and adding new ones, as I mentioned, you are undergoing an update to your general plan at the same time the rest of the general plan, I should say. So, we want to ensure that policies that we put into this element, which is part of the general plan, are consistent with the rest of it. We want to ensure that we're leveraging existing services and tools for promoting housing development and housing services that the city and the county are already doing, and also committing the city to what it can realistically accomplish so that we can really make a real difference. We did go over the housing element with our HCD reviewer at the end of August. As I said, only minor issues were identified, and these were pretty quickly resolved through some emails. We did not have to go through another formal 60-day review process that would have pushed us very close to the deadline, so we're thankful for that. Generally speaking, the revisions that we had to make were focused on clarifying some background material. I'm not going to go through all of these points, but if you do have any questions about them, I'm happy to answer. And similarly, we did make some revisions to policies and programs just to do things like clarify timelines, commit the city to doing things at certain points, and, and also ensure that the programs were consistent with and supportive of state law that pertain to these. The Planning Commission held their hearing on November 25th to consider the housing element and the negative declaration. They did recommend that the city council adopt the element as submitted. They did also suggest that the council move forward with addressing required amendments pursuant to state, sorry, Senate Bill 2. That is a pretty critical component of the housing element that is the only thing that is keeping you from being fully compliant. It's something that was in your previous element and you did not act on. It pertains mostly to allowing emergency shelters to be permitted by right in at least one zone in the city, and also ensuring that supportive and transitional housing is also permitted by right as a residential use in other zones that also permit residential uses. So, the, the certification letter that we got from the state is conditional upon you making those changes to your zoning ordinance. So, that will be something that the city should commit to do within the next year. So, that concludes my formal presentation. I'd be happy to take your questions before the public hearing and the action that you may take.
So, I will open the public hearing now. And for item number seven, I have no cards on that. So, counsel, do you have any questions on this? Any questions to staff? Councilmember Riddick?
A question first for the city attorney. So, the, the agenda item, it's noticed as the housing element, but, but no housing element is included with the staff report. And on the city website, the staff report also has no, does not have an attachment of the housing element. So, I'm wondering, procedurally, is that a violation of the Brown Act, number one? So, I'll start with that.
The answer to your question is no. The Brown Act requires that the city make available those records which are going to be discussed or subject or discussed and shared with the council members. It does not require that they be posted in the same manner. Interested individuals have a obligation to take steps to obtain documentation that's made available if they want to comment or be informed about public process.
I would think, though, that as the document, as the staff report references, you know, the document, that maybe you would at least provide a link to the document. It seems to make sense to me. The other question I had was, so the Coastal Commission recently approved an LCP amendment and made some modifications, and the city adopted those, having to do with second dwelling units and density bonuses and that sort of thing. My understanding was that the changes made by the Coastal Commission were going to be included in the housing element document to be adopted. You know, for instance, there are statements relative to second dwelling units, you know, being exempt from, from Measure D, and the Coastal Commission provided, you know, very specific guidance about that, in fact, that they were not exempt. And yet, it looks like we're still looking at the November document that did not reflect Coastal Commission action. So, I'm just wondering, why not?
Bruce Sambo is here from the Planning Department, and he would actually be best qualified to answer that question.
Thank you, counsel, and Madam Mayor and counsel. Bruce Sambo, Planning Manager, you are correct. Those were amendments were required as modifications, but those are to the zoning ordinance and not to the policy piece, which is the housing element. So, some of the things that were identified to get at second dwelling units and those regulations that you just mentioned absolutely were codified, but that's in the zoning ordinance, not in the general plan.
But it appears to me that the housing element makes representations about, about city policy that, in fact, currently, as a result of the commission action, the city adoption, not part of city policy, or the housing element reflects, you know, a different set of facts than currently exists through the, the LCP amendment process.
Actually, the housing element was written, these amendments that you're speaking about were approved in 2010 and 11. So, we knew that they were adopted at the city, and we drafted the policy plan referencing those. And one of the implementation strategies that we identified was making the certification of those amendments a priority so that we can get them in operation. But again, it's a separation of zoning ordinance and policy, and the policies are consistent with the ordinances that were amended back in 2010.
Well, except that the, the submittal to the Coastal Commission was modified by Coastal Commission staff and adopted by the commission, and also subsequently by the city, you know, just in the last several months. So, it seems to me there's a disconnect between what we're saying and the housing element. I just want to point out that there's a disconnect between what we infer in the housing element and what is, in fact, you know, reality in terms of second dwelling units being, not being exempt from, from Measure D. I just want to point out the discrepancy there. And I have other comments I'd like to make, but I'd like to allow other council members to ask questions.
Councilmembers, do you have other questions?
Yes. It's about the emergency or transitional shelter, and the requirement is that we provide it. Is there a requirement that we provide a certain number of, number of shelters? Is that based on our, the information we gathered about the number of homeless, for instance, in our city? How's that, how do we go about doing something like that?
So, the, the statute requires that the city name at least one zoning district in which emergency shelters would be permitted by right. It does not mandate that the city actually build those shelters. However, the zoning district that you choose, you do have to do a site capacity analysis to show that there are at least some parcels available for development within that site that could support the number of shelter beds that you determine would meet the needs of your community. And as you know, the county participates in a biannual homeless count. So, the data of the most recent count are found in the housing element. So, generally, what you would do is, you know, you would work through a community process in which you would choose the zone that you think would be most appropriate for a shelter. Generally, you look for something where, you know, there's access to services, transit, et cetera, things that those folks generally need. Ensure that there are, you know, at least a handful of sites that could be reasonably developed or redeveloped with a shelter. But as I said, the city is not required to actually build the shelter, only make those sites and that review process available.
Thank you. I have a question. We have a Catholic workers' housing on Kelly Avenue. Is that considered shelter for transitional housing? Are you familiar with that?
I don't remember off the top of my head which facility that is, but perhaps Bruce could fill me in. We, I would have to go back and consult the document. It's been some time since I've looked through it. We did try to do a pretty thorough inventory of all of the services that are currently available. And often what happens is that cities do have shelters that are in place already, and they may be, you know, associated with a church or with some other community organization or something like that. But the, your code may or may not allow more shelters to be built. And so, even if you do have one in place already, you still do need to amend your ordinance in case somebody else did want to come and build one, for instance, if that organization decided to stop offering that service.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Councilmember Riddick, you had a couple of more questions, and because I think your, your first one might take some conversations with staff to delineate further.
Yeah, and I'm not asking to spend a whole lot of time on it. I just wanted to point out that as far as I can see, there appears to be a discrepancy. But I kind of get what the housing element is. I, I met with the consultant and ran through the law, so I understand what we have to do and why we do it. I just want to point out that, you know, currently, we don't have any non-priority water hookups for residential development, other than those that might be obtained, you know, on the open market to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars. So, water is certainly a constraint, and that's not recognized in the housing element. Somebody looking at the housing element would see Wavecraft making available, you know, 90 homes. We know that that's probably not likely at this point. So, there's, there's a lot of, you know, things in there. I would call them sort of absurdities in a way, because things have changed, and we know things are going to change more, yet this document has to reflect the current, you know, general plan and LCP. So, I am going to vote for this because a lot of work was done on this before I was on the council, a lot of input. I see that Sam Carr is given sort of marquee attention in the housing element. Not sure why that is, but I am concerned that as we go through this general plan update, the housing element is likely to be out of whack, and we don't have to really update that for another eight years. So, I understand it's part of the general plan, but at least for several years, it's not going to probably reflect where we're going to end up in a, in a year or two. So, I just wanted to ramble on about that and
You're welcome.
Have my say, but I will be voting yes.
You're welcome, too. And I would, at some point, so, so that you're comfortable, if staff, we can come to some agreement and understanding between what is, appeared to be a discrepancy between the zoning and, and the housing, if we can get that more comfortable or come to more definitive answer on that, I think that would be good. Thank you. Counsel, any more questions on this? All right. If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I believe the motion would be to adopt the resolution certifying the
Excuse me, do I have to close the public hearing?
Yep.
Thanks. Public holding, public ordinance now closed. Hearing. Thank you. John?
So, at this time, I would like to move to adopt the resolution certifying the negative declaration in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and approving the 2015 dash 2023 housing element as an amendment to the City of Half Moon Bay general plan.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Housemember Riddick?
Aye.
Housemember Muller?
Aye.
Housemember Penrose?
Aye.
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
Yes. Thank you. We move now to item number eight, review of general plan update work program.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. And as we get our presentation ready, last month, the city council requested that we refocus the planning effort on more manageable segments, and we understood your direction to be, to focus on areas where there is common ground or community consensus, and just build for there, from there. And so, tonight, we're going to go through a proposed work program and hopefully get some of your, your comments. Did we get the clicker? So, the recommendation tonight is that the city council consider streamlining the process, and we also seek your deliberation on components of, of the plan. We're going to briefly go through a background of the general plan update effort, overview of the proposed focus of the proposed focus plan, and a review of the public engagement plan, and then talk about a project schedule. Why are we updating the general plan? You've seen a lot of these facts before. It's outdated. It doesn't speak to the future, the next 25 years, in Half Moon Bay. And it is not consistent with some of the desires and wishes of the community. We do not have an open space element and conservation element, which is actually a required element for the city. So if you boil down a general plan into kind of its most basic sense, what you're really doing is you're providing consistency through seven required elements: land use, circulation, housing, conservation, noise, open space, and safety. And it is a coordinated effort to speak to how the city will grow and improve in the next couple of years. I put together this next slide to just kind of show you the hierarchy of how a plan is developed, and it's somewhat abstract, because it's not a very linear process, but these are the key areas or steps or phases to get to a desired plan. Starting from the bottom, what we did was community visioning, where we talked about what were the needs, what people saw in the future for Half Moon Bay. We worked on developing some guiding principles through that phase also. We went through the next phase of identifying issues, opportunities, and threats. That was our existing conditions report, our economic trends that have been on the street for maybe eight months now. And as people bring issues to us that are incorrect, if they're warranted, we do make corrections to that. The next step is developing concepts that address the concerns or speak to the issues that are inconsistent or out of alignment with what people say they want and council sets policy for and what exists today. So the goal is really to come up with some concepts, and that's kind of where we are right now in the process. Each phase of this has a public outreach process. The next phase is going into and selecting a preferred concept, and from that concept, we would develop goals, objectives, policies, and others from the preferred concept. Then we develop the draft general plan and LCP update. Next, we would go through our zoning code, which is really the implementation arm, and it really gives teeth to the policies. Policies alone do not really create change. It has to be policy in coordination with zoning that actually gives teeth to any growth. Next, there would be the general plan and LCP update EIR. Environmentally, how are we impacting our cities? And then finally, the adoption of the plan. And so tonight, we want to just get your take on what we're proposing, and at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Bruce, who's going to walk you through the rest of the presentation.
Thanks, Dante. Thank you, Dante. So we're going to—excuse me. So in terms of background, this item was last before the City Council on February 3rd. This is continuation of that same general plan study session. At that last meeting, the City Council directed the staff to refine the work program and to modify it so that it's a little bit more manageable. And consequently, if we were to summarize that direction, it really would be to develop a preferred, you know, preferred direction to focus the plan on these following elements. So these are the components of the revised work program. It really includes four core areas and another area of an optional topic that Dante will go over. But in general, it involves land use, open space and conservation planning, developing a climate action plan, and traffic and transportation planning. I'll get into those in a little bit more detail, but I'm going to shift the presentation back to Dante so he can go over another interesting component that we identified through the process that we wanted to bring your attention. It's developing a healthy community plan. So maybe after Dante explains a little bit more about that, we can give it back to me, and I can go over in more detail those other components.
Thank you. And just briefly, in our interaction with the public and with groups, something that really came to the forefront was this idea of creating a healthy community. And this was always planned for us once we started the community outreach and engagement process, to talk about how this healthy community planning kind of will work together with our general plan. Basically, what it is, is developing a framework for including a health focus in the design of the built environment. And you can do that through a lot of different ways. You know, we have a population that's aging. Do we need to consider health and human services needs for that population in the future? We know that we have 30% Latino residents here. Most of them are Spanish-speaking. What types of things do we need to do to ensure that they're included in the process? Do we need to look at access to recreation? Do we need to look at access to medical services? Access to public transit? And so we envision this healthy community planning being kind of a standalone, but also its policies being filtered throughout land use planning, open space planning, and so forth. And so that is a recommendation that we're asking for feedback on tonight.
So in addition to that, there's the four other key areas, and I'll briefly touch on those. There's the focus of land use. So the direction that we got was to focus land use and transportation improvement on the core downtown concepts. And also integrate that with any results that may come forward at the council's discretion through the Connect the Coastside Transit Plan that's being developed at the county. And so that'll come back with that whole piece later on, and the council will be able to pick and choose and see how relevant they might want to integrate those plans are with the circulation element of this plan. The second major component is developing, as Dante indicated, the open space and conservation Those items are currently missing from the general plan, so those things we need to have to balance out the seven mandatory elements. Those two we need. And in addition to that, it would be developing the hazard and vulnerability assessment maps, the environmental maps. We've shown them in previous meetings, but the maps that we have are outdated. These maps are more relevant, they're more accurate, and they're more understandable, they're more readable. That also includes developing the sea level rise assessment for the community and mapping that accordingly. And lastly, one of the key components of the conservation piece of this is developing strategies for getting at conserving sensitive biological areas and our agricultural land. Third key part of this is developing the climate action plan. You may recall that we were successful at getting this partially grant-funded, and we were able to leverage those grant funds to integrate them into the climate action plan and the general planning process. The two key deliverables we're after here is developing a system where we can get measurable goals that get the community closer to achieving our greenhouse gas emissions standards and monitoring programs, then also developing sustainability—sustainability program to support the climate action plan and those greenhouse gas objectives—or the reduction of those greenhouse gas objectives. The fourth piece, perhaps the most important, is the community engagement phase of the work. That involves really a number of key steps here. The first is developing the Alternatives Workbook and a summary. So at the conclusion of the—when we were able to study some concepts for the downtown, the idea here is to prepare a workbook for the community so that they could look at these things and see how it all kind of comes together. So that would be the Alternatives Workbook and Summary of what those downtown concepts represent. It includes also a press release, email newsletter, and development of a new website that we're working on right now. We phased out Plan HMB, and we're moving to a new website that's a little bit easier to use. We want to keep all the information there, but we'll also have that information. It's a corollary to the city website, but it's just for general plan stuff hosted through Diane Body Consultants. That'll be a place where all the general plan information also resides, in addition to our city webpage, too. Includes community workshops, a series of neighborhood and stakeholder meetings, move about tours, and youth engagement that kind of ties back to that healthy community planning effort that Dante discussed earlier. This is the schedule. I know it's not real readable in that format, but the key things are that we're looking at in the next couple of months are focusing on the land use plan and downtown concepts, developing the Alternatives Workbook. Ultimately, later this month, hopefully, going back to the General Plan Advisory Committee to get their input and hopefully enlist them as ambassadors in the community outreach process and see how we can work together to develop a more robust community outreach process in this refocused effort. And then the other—the fourth piece, as we discussed earlier, is development of that open space and conservation plan. Then moving on in the next series, the next two to four months, which is noticeable on your schedule, but it is in your report, is developing a development of the transportation concepts and the sea level rise analysis. All of this stuff is going on kind of concurrently and in parallel, but the four key deliverables in the next month are the land use, the Alternatives Workbook, consultation with General Plan Advisory Committee on Community Outreach, and the open space and conservation elements. Lastly, though, our recommendation is really—was developed in response to the council's request to revise and streamline the general plan work program and the public engagement process. So what we're asking for direction here on are do these components of the work program get what your ideas were and your needs for refinements of the process? And is there any further input that you may be able to provide us to continue developing the general plan work program? That concludes our presentation. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. And you'd mentioned a schedule, and I know we've talked about getting a schedule of workshops on the book. So thank you for the timeline, but if we could start getting some dates out sooner rather than later so people can get that on their radar, that'd be good.
Right, and that is the intent. What we would ask is if we can consult with the G-PAC to solidify kind of the public engagement, and we will come back definitely with some dates, some specific dates for the workshops.
Great, thank you. Council, we do have about seven cards from the public. Would you like to hear that first? All right. Good. So we will start with—we have George Mutif, followed by Ben Halsted.
Somebody left a pen up here. I don't know if it belongs here, or somebody in the audience. I'll just leave it there. My name is George Mutif. This action, the general plan update, was initiated entirely by the previous council. That means that the previous council picked the consulting firm. The G-PAC members dedicated the staff and provided direction for this effort. The consulting firm is good and has its place in this process. The members chosen for the G-PAC are all outstanding choices and demonstrate their value at each meeting, providing thoughtful and diverse input reflective of the interests of our community. Staff has done a remarkable job to date trying to organize, listen, gather input, and provide direction for the process, in my humble opinion. That council should be proud that they initiated this long overdue update. It is necessary, as we know, a necessary element for our future. However, we have a new council now. The game has changed, and that change should be reflected in substance and direction, and I sense the effort is there. I have attended all the meetings regarding the G-PAC. If I could, I'd offer an observation to this body. There seems to be some confusion, confusion from the public, confusion from some of the G-PAC members, and maybe even a little bit on the staff. I know when I left the last council meeting, for example, I was confused. I didn't get a sense of clear direction with clear goals and objectives for this update going forward. This is a necessary and important task and should be addressed with complete clarity in terms of specific direction from council. That can be a bit daunting due to the magnitude of the process, but it is necessary to achieve the best results for Half Moon Bay going forward. Half Moon Bay is expending considerable resources for this process. Local volunteers are providing their time and consideration to this. The public has an interest in this. Updating our general plan is a critical foundation for updating other guiding principles and policies like the LCPLUP update, which is just as overdue. The resources are in place and ready, willing and able to tackle the task. The only thing that is somewhat fuzzy, in my humble opinion, is the much-needed clarity of direction, and of course, this council's full support. I think the support is there, but I would ask this council to take the time to get clear between yourselves what specific direction you want to see, so that all of the corresponding elements can be used to their maximum capabilities, which will, in the end, provide us with the best general plan we could obtain. Thank you for your time and your consideration and your efforts in this matter.
Thank you. Ben Halsted, followed by Harvey Rorback.
Hi, my name is Ben Halsted. I'm here to, you know, talk about kind of the outreach, and, you know, not so much the community, but I guess what you call the stakeholders, you know, people that own property here but, you know, aren't part of the really—don't live here. You know, I think the—which includes me. My brothers and I own a lot or two out in Wavecrest. And just my opinion, you know, I think the outreach to the stakeholders has been less than—I mean, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but, you know, I'd like to—you know, it would be nice to see them included more, and I know, you know, maybe there's some staff limitations in getting out to them. But this is what I would like to do. This is what I'd like to do for the process. 25 years ago, I organized all the lot owners out in North Wavecrest during the Wavecrest redevelopment process, and it wasn't hard to do. And I can do that again. I can go out and contact every one of them for you and try to organize them like I did before, and try to get them—to have one representative represent them. What I'd like to add—what I'm requesting from the council is, if I can do all that, I'd like to see that representative in the G-PAC. I'd also like to be able to—for this representative to have access to city staff and maybe one council member every once in a while to give their input. I just hate to see this process sneak by all these people. I mean, they're not—they are part of the community in the sense that, you know, through their parcel tax, you know, they're contributing to the schools here. They're contributing to the fire protection. I mean, I think they need to be embraced more. Now, if that seems reasonable, I can—after I complete this task, I can get ahold of city staff. Thank you.
Do we have your email, sir? I didn't see it on the card. I know we have your address, but if we do not have your email, can you see staff?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. Harvey Rorback, followed by— Harvey Rorback followed by Pam Fisher.
Good evening, Council. Harvey Rorback, 464 Pine Avenue. I'm glad to see that in the words of my sister-in-law, you're heading toward the good. I think the direction, the change in the general plan is positive and that's encouraging. I have four comments to make about the staff report. They're kind of unrelated, but I hope you take them seriously. The direction of staff was to refocus and simplify, but if you go on the website, there are still these multiple concept maps, and I think that's very confusing to the public. I don't think there should be multiple concept maps. I think there should be a single map. It'd be much easier for the public to understand. Point number two, the timeline is unrealistic. You really need more time to have the community outreach meetings. Instead of four total community outreach meetings, I think there should be four in every neighborhood. That'll take time. And as the previous speaker said, we need to have input from the community. The staff report said it was looking for broad-based participation, but it also said that the city staff would meet with neighborhood groups using presentation materials provided by the consultants. Now, having been through this business with the consultants providing the presentation materials, that's how they force people to do things that they wouldn't ordinarily not do. So we need to make sure that the consultants are not the ones driving the process, which has up to now been the case, I think, certainly before this council started changing the direction. My last comment has to do with the circulation element. I don't know, all of a sudden we see the statement that we want to integrate Connect the Coastside into the general plan. My impression of the Connect the Coastside organization is that it's dominated by realtors, developers, and commercial interests. And I don't know why all of a sudden we're integrating this group who has objectives that are not consistent with our guiding principles to suddenly be allowed to join in. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Fisher followed by Doreen Garrity.
Pam Fisher, 659 Highland Avenue, Half Moon Bay. I want to ditto on George. I know how hard staff has been working on this, and they have been friendly, cooperative, so kudos to dealing with the amount of pressure that you've been under. I have read the staff report several times and would concur with the feedback that I've been aware of, receiving emails, et cetera, that it is dense, it is confusing. You speak of organizations that the general public may not even know about, for example, Connect the Coastside. I've read, and sometimes what occurs through this is lack of transparency because even tonight, Farmer John, using alphabet soup, not everybody knows the initials of organizations. So I would just caution council to be clear when you say you've spoken to a group, use their name. When you have a report or you have a file that you are publishing, if you're using abbreviations, make sure you've notated what that abbreviation stands for in your forms. My biggest issue, again, George, I will agree with everything that Harvey Rorback just said, but before we can engage in what only can be described as wishful thinking in the general plan, we have to have the information that will provide us with feasibility first. And again, that is the update of, I mean, this was in your bullets, which was very, very, very clear. Climate change, related sea level rise, open space and conservation elements, identification of environmentally sensitive area maps, and absolutely need updating. I have not seen an updated map. I mean, these are 30 years old, 40 years old. I mean, it's ridiculous. You can't form a plan on outdated data. The other issue, why two plans? I agree with Harvey. Give us one plan down core. Present it. Alter it with the public input. Changing the zoning in the PUDs again appears to be in direct conflict with the limited growth prescribed in the guiding principles. Developing the Beechwood property with a hotel or other income-producing plan, although I understand because it's city property, it's attractive, but as a quality of life issue, the three landlocked east side neighborhoods want park, we want playground, we want low-impact sport field, baseball field, something for our kids to be able to walk to if they're not engaged in an official sport or, you know, some place for our neighborhood children to go to since they can't walk safely on the highway anyway to get anywhere. I would also suggest that, you know, Mr. Nurhan, sell his property to CUSD so they can improve their egress. Maybe something is in the works. We've heard rumors. I'll have to check, I'll have to check the reports coming out of CUSD. But adding development to that property with the present conditions of the roads that we have is really a nightmare for those of us who live in the area. And I also want to say in regards to--
Mrs. Fisher?
Yep.
The buzzer rang. Can you wrap up?
Wrap it up, absolutely.
Thank you.
In regards to stakeholders, there was a great deal of controversy when these stakeholders were volunteered. And it really don't, I agree with Mr. Rorback, don't truly represent the body of the CPAC group. There seemed to be real confusion in the, for the consultants in terms of what the interview from the stakeholders provided them with what they were facing from the general public. So I am a little cautious about using stakeholders as representatives. Yes, they are a piece of it.
Mrs. Fisher?
They're a piece of it, but don't represent the whole community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Doreen Garrity followed by Mr. Frank Garrity.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Doreen Garrity. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you and your staff for listening to the Highland Park residents in previous meetings and implementing changes that we requested by removing Highway One access through Quartz Avenue. So thank you very much for listening to us. But I do have some concerns regarding our general plan. My first concern tonight is the general plan, like I think other speakers have said, has become extremely confusing. With each revision, it's getting more confusing. The planning process just seems to be getting more complicated. It also just seems like we're just moving very quickly, and I know that the consultants are putting a lot of work into this, and a lot of it is really good work, but I'm thinking perhaps maybe we just need to take a recess from that right now from the consultants and their extremely high fees that we're paying them each month and start investigating if some of these plans are actually feasible. We can't talk about land use until we understand our restrictions such as listed in the report, climate change related to sea level rises, open space, conservation elements, and environmentally sensitive habitat. Then we should talk to the citizens of Half Moon Bay and ask them, what do you want? My second concern is, like other speakers have said, I'm really confused as why are we integrating Connect the Coastside at this point into our general plan when we don't understand the restrictions that's going to be placed on the land use? In my opinion, the developers have already had their voices heard as stakeholders. So you need to be directing your staff to be having, and I'm glad to hear that maybe some more is going to happen, but you need to direct them immediately to start having neighborhood meetings and listen to the citizens of Half Moon Bay who are going to live, who live here every day with these changes. Last week, I know a neighbor contacted a city staff member to attempt to arrange a neighborhood meeting to discuss the general plan. This neighbor was told by the city staff member that they were directed by city council to focus on the compact core and just outside the compact core regarding the circulation element. Therefore, there was no meeting scheduled with this particular neighborhood. I can appreciate that the staff, I truly appreciate the staff, that they're very busy and they're doing an excellent job and they're always available to talk to us, and I appreciate that. But they need to be directed to talk, to go out and talk to the neighborhoods right away, not months down the road, right away. Make several appointments with each neighborhood and talk to them. So my question is, why at this juncture is the staff recommending, first of all, to include the Connect the Coastside county group in this process when the neighborhoods are not yet being included in that process? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Frank Garrity followed by John Callan.
Frank Garrity, Highland Park Neighborhood, Madam Mayor, council, staff, and consultants, if they're in the room. First of all, I want to say thank you. I really appreciate the hard work, the good work you've done on this plan. My comment is that you have worked so long and hard on the plan that the plan and the details are very familiar to you and easy for you to understand. My concern is that for many people in the general public who are not as involved in the daily discussions and the many revisions to the plan, that the staff report and the plan are very confusing. Some of this confusion could be alleviated by getting the neighborhoods more involved and getting them involved soon. This will go a long way to ensuring communication, involvement, transparency, and buy-in from the community that you've talked so much about. One of the things that's confusing is that, last time I looked, there were three concepts, they were called. Now the staff report describes two options. Well, did you remove one of the concepts or did you add two new options, you call it? Are we down to two or up to five of these concepts/options? It's very confusing. Several things need better explanations or definitions. We've heard it mentioned that there's one new thing we've never heard of until I read the staff report. It's mentioned several times. In fact, the very first objective is to integrate this into the plan. This new thing is called the Connect the Coastside project. Well, is it a project that the city did? What was the objectives? What were the results of this project? Who worked on it? I don't know anyone that's heard of this project that the city did. And then I've also heard it's a group of people. Well, if that's the case, the public has a right to know and for transparency reasons. Who are the members of this group and who are they aligned with? And why is it our first objective to integrate it into the plan? We've never heard of this. Last thing is on the maps, the colors and the explanations are, they're very helpful to go partway, but again, they need more detail. I was surprised to see the latest map showing on Beechwood property, a hotel. Again, the Terrace Avenue people and the Grand U people have never been met with, never had any input, have never heard of this, and I know they do not want a hotel over their back fence. So again, just to ensure that you have truly heard from the public, to ensure their involvement, to ensure transparency, and ultimately buy-in, I urge you to meet with the neighborhoods and do it soon. The sooner the better. Thanks.
Thank you. And last comment from John Callan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd just like to say ditto with Mr. Halsted. The stakeholders should be heard in this matter, and up to now, I think it's been very limited. We appreciate this council's focus and attention on strategic planning. Again, our company has substantial land holdings in the southern end of town and the Olavista Wavecrest subdivisions, and we continue to look forward to working with all of you to design a development that's mutually compatible with the existing open space for the overall benefit of the city. Please design this plan to give us that opportunity. We recognize that a faction of the city wishes our lands to be designated as open space. However, I'd like to remind you that we were deeply involved with the former Wavecrest project, a historical project that to this day has value for the city. As such, we were parties to the development agreement of the Wavecrest Restoration Redevelopment Project with the city, in which the city agreed to allow us to develop our properties in the event that the redevelopment project was not developed as it was envisioned. It's our opinion that if the property is zoned as open state, it would frustrate our ability to perform under that development agreement. Of course, we expect the city to honor all of its commitments and agreements, and after all, we've invested a substantial amount of funds and reliance upon those agreements. I want to thank you very much for your time and consideration, and we look forward to working with the city and doing something grand out there. Thank you very much. A nice way to end the evening. God bless.
Thank you. And thank you to all your speakers for your comments and your input.
Mayor, can I respond to a few of the comments?
Yes, you may. Then I have a few things to comment on myself.
I'm sorry. Just to make it clear, the general plan does have a lot of moving pieces, but essentially it is, again, a coordinated effort for how the city will move forward and deal with the next 25 years with population, traffic, housing, natural resources, and any type of special legislation that is put on the city. What we are saying simply is we are not, and what we understood your direction to be was to make no land use changes in any other area in the city except for the central core. We understood your direction to be, deal with and address traffic citywide because that is a concern citywide. We understood your direction to be, complete an open space and conservation element for the entire city, complete a climate action plan for the entire city, and we're recommending completing a healthy community plan for the entire city. The one speaker said that it's confusing because the concepts, concept maps are still in the website. Well, yes, they are because we don't know the outcome of tonight. If council agrees with us, obviously, we will make changes to the website. The timeline for community meetings, there is a lot of detail that we are not showing in the timeline, but within that five-month period, we intend to have four workshops, general workshops, but there will probably be dozens of meetings with special groups, neighborhoods, and so forth. The issue in terms of materials provided by the consultant, the consultant really works for you and you are the policymakers, so those materials will be consistent with whatever policy direction that you provide to us. Beyond that, oh, the other thing is Connect the Coastside is the county effort to really coordinate traffic on the coast side that we have been involved in. We sat in some meetings. There are going to be some alternatives that are going to be forwarded to the community. We have contributed by way of our circulation element. The circulation element that was actually adopted last year is part of that Connect the Coastside. So it's not something that's foreign or that's just working outside of our community planning. And ultimately, if the city decided that we don't agree with Connect the Coastside, we want to go a different route, obviously, that is definitely a policy issue for city council and they could direct so. Beyond that, we're happy to hear any questions or comments.
Thank you, Dante. From what I'm hearing from the public and to, and it confuses me, and I think this is where the rumors get started, made me hear that nonsense a few months ago, we were building in bluff tops. How does none of us want to build in bluff tops? And I know these concept maps are just confusing us. I mean, just tonight, you're hearing that there's a hotel going to be put on Beechwood. Oh, my God, there's nobody put no hotel on Beechwood. In fact, we're not even going to discuss this yet, and when we do, that'll be a whole different workshop for us to talk about. different workshop for us to talk about. I mean, Beechwood can sit vacant. We don't have that pressure to do anything with it since we went after all the insurance companies and got money. I mean, at one time, it was, that was, we needed to sell it to do something to get money. Beechwood could sit there for the next 20 years or indefinitely leave it as is as far as I'm personally concerned. But that's up to the community, what the community wants to do. So we're not going to do anything with Beechwood, and this is not specifically about putting a hotel on Beechwood. But I think these maps are killing us all. And I understand the maps and why they were done, and it was a concept. You could have this. But we're having confusion with the roads, and people are taking the instance of a road is like a car traveling a road through there, when it, it could be really a suggestion of that's a trail, it's a pedestrian, it's, it's a goat trail, whatever. We've got to figure out another way to display these maps because they're, they're confusing people, and it's leading to rumors and it's leading to all kinds of things. So I think we need to take a, a look at that. And as for, for Connect the Coast, we had a presentation here a few months ago from Supervisor Horsley and the group, and so I think there's, there's some great value in including them because that's all a part of traffic and traffic circulation. So it's not a secret group. This is the county, county's planning, and it's all supposedly to help us do that so we can take their recommendations or not. They're, they're not a secret group, then they did make a presentation here a few months ago. So these are some of my brief comments, but we've got to, we've got to fix those maps somehow or, or display them differently. And I understand they were put up, here's, here's some ideas that you could do, and there's a lot of things that people don't want that's on them, but they're still hanging there, and people are thinking it's happening, like we're building on bluff tops. But we're not.
So based on your direction on February 3rd, technically, there are no maps. Those will disappear tomorrow based on your input today or tonight. And we will develop, and somebody mentioned two options, we will develop two options that does not touch land use anywhere else in the city except for downtown. So there, there's no more discussion about trails or roads or this or that. It only talks about land use changes in the downtown area.
Okay, that makes me happy. Councilmembers, you, you obviously have some comments as well, so who's up? Vice Mayor, co-op check.
Thank you. So, last time we talked about this, I said I want to trust the process, right? And we'll go through the process, and there have not been any plans presented to us. There's not been a recommendation, whether you have a concept map and there's a hotel on it, or a water park, or a community, or open space, it's a concept, right? Just trust in that process. I, I get that, that it can get very emotional, so, and when people look at the maps and see a hotel on a, on a concept map, like, oh, my God, they're planning a hotel. I can see how that confusion comes in. So if not maps, how do we articulate, if not concepts, how do we articulate these ideas that we want to explore and brainstorming and get input on? What, what's, right, what's the tool? So I get confused because that, like, an idea map totally works for me.
Right.
But because I know there's not going to be a hotel there, and I know there was never, this ridiculous absurd notion of houses on the bluff tops. And, you know, I just know that's not going to happen, so without that, how do we articulate those things?
So what we plan is to have two maps, two concepts, that will have varying degrees of changes only within the downtown. So no changes, again, anywhere else. Two maps only in the downtown. We will develop workbooks for the community. Part of the process of going out to the community and talking to people is you need to make sure that the information that you present is easily understandable, you know, we, and so that's what we're in the process of doing, developing workbooks that will compare, here's what we have now, here's option A and the changes to the downtown, here's option B, and compare all of the, all of the different concepts to the existing general plan. So there'll be a workshop, we will have workbooks, we'll have four workshops on land use, one on open space, climate action, traffic, and transportation planning, but also going out and talking to groups. You know, we probably, when this is all said and done, we, we have a map of all the neighborhoods and neighborhood associations. We, we hope to talk to each neighborhood, maybe more than once, about certain issues. So that's essentially how we will help the community understand the issues and understand the trade-offs and be, be able to contribute.
Thank you. And I think we did ourselves, unless I read it incorrectly, I think we did ourselves a little disservice by talking about four meetings because you're talking about dozens of meetings and outreach, and we really need to document that and publish that and articulate that because it's been with the council asked for previously, which are, which is activity in the neighborhoods to get input, perhaps touching them more than once, including, I appreciate the speakers tonight, including, what do you call them, constituents who may not live here but have property here, I, I want their input in the process as well. Should be 360, and I think that would make, make sense for this process. But it didn't read well because it said four. And I think, and, you know, whatever that number is, we should, they say up to 30 or maybe, whatever that number is, I just, it, I think we need to stress that because it's really important. And for the, the comment from the public about who develops the materials, we do. We, the, the materials at these meetings, we hire staff and consultants and contractors to do the work for the council and, and staff, and that's where those materials are going to come from. I, I'm wicked great at PowerPoint, but I won't be creating those materials. But I think that's the appropriate resource for them, and that's all my comments.
Are you ready for me?
Councilmember Reddick.
I don't think that'll be possible. So I'm going to start with some questions, and forgive me if they're pointed, but I'd, I'd like to get, you know, to the meat of it pretty quickly and not waste anybody's time. And as you know, I tend to be quite a direct person, so let's go to it. On pages 50 through 53, under discussion, it mentions the development of four defined steps for common ground from the direction of the council. That includes two concepts. I'd like to know, under whose direction these four defined steps were developed? Like, where did they come from? What was the, the genesis of it?
That's what we understood the direction to be on February 3rd. We're here tonight to confirm it. If that's not the case, we're asking you to tell us what, what the situation is.
Okay. And who directed staff to integrate with Connect the Coastside? Where did that recommendation come from?
I don't believe that directly came from council. It, it's, it's just an effort that's going on. If, if council has different ideas about how we resolve transportation, we'd love to hear them tonight.
So I, I think other people have touched on this tonight, but, and it sounds to me like we're not talking about really any concepts now. I was confused also about the, is it two concepts we're talking about or is it five? Is it the three original plus two refinements of one? I, I think that's been answered, so I won't go there again. So the thing about the integrating with the Connect the Coastside that really stands out for me and that concerns me is the fact that we're sort of basing our own process or trying to. There's, there's some discrepancies on the proposed CTMP schedule. And, and why, why are we doing that? Why is all of a sudden is that being recommended is driving our, our own schedule?
Well, I, I can try and jump in here a little bit, Madam Councilmember, but the idea was is that we all understood and heard loud and clear that traffic and transportation is an issue. As you know, the circulation element was just updated the year before last. That's the most current and relevant piece of traffic information. We understand that that's moving along and that's kind of a parallel process to the cities, but at some point, they will come back to us and present their recommendations to the council, and it's up to the council to decide how much you want to embrace those. So we just thought it'd be helpful to identify that that's an option because if, if you will, it's changed the landscape of information that's forthcoming along the transportation front. We did footnote in the report, though, we said that we will present those options, and the council can decide at their discretion how, how they want to integrate, if they want to integrate any of those at all. So I, that may give you a little bit more background.
Yeah, again, I, I'm kind of stunned by the timing. It talks about developing focused land use concepts and citywide transportation strategies in the next three to four weeks. I, I just don't see how that's possible.
Yeah, finishing the biological resources.
Excuse me, finishing the biological resources work within the next month. So what is the work program for that? Who's doing the work and sort of what's been done so far?
So much of, much of the work is information, and so a lot of that work has been done already. Staff has to review it for accuracy, and then we roll it out to the community. Things like some of the analysis for the, the habitat maps or, or other things, I'm trying to pick out a specific issue, but a lot of work has already been done. Through our existing conditions phase, we know a lot about where hazards are. It's a process of just mapping those and then rolling those out once we start to talk with the community and engage the community on policies. So that's why the, the timeframe seems short. It's because the work is pretty much done, and it's work that didn't require input because it's just information.
So is this things like mapping wetlands and endangered species habitats and sensitive natural resources, streams, riparian buffers, that sort of thing? Is that kind of a nutshell?
We, we have some of that, but obviously, when we go to our open space and conservation element, we have to get into some fine kind of detailed work. But to some extent, it, it's to the point within a couple of weeks or so for us to be able to roll that out to the community to start to comment on it.
Okay, so my understanding of our, of our direction and intent was to focus and simplify. And to be perfectly honest, I don't find that this work program accomplishes that at all, to be perfectly honest. It reminds me of like being at a Giants game and seeing the cap dance on the big, you know, super screens, you know, trying to keep your eye on where the, the ball is, is going and where it's, you know, ending up. And so that really concerns me. For anybody who hasn't been, you know, attending meetings and reading the newspaper and understanding these concepts and these acronyms and stuff, I can see where it would be, you know, fairly mind-boggling and actually probably discourage involvement. So I'm really, you know, concerned about that. I work in an area doing natural resources projects, science-based, where the most important first step is to create a strong foundation of data and to work off of that data. So first, you're, you're identifying baseline conditions and you're mapping those, and those include not just conditions on the ground but environmental and regulatory constraints. And from there, you move on to, well, there's constraints, but are there opportunities? So you don't start developing scenarios, you know, solutions to natural resource problems until you understand the baseline conditions and what all the constraints are, because that's going to dictate, you know, the shape of your project. So I don't understand why we wouldn't start out by wrapping up the environmental, you know, resources and constraints mapping, completing the work under the Sea Level Rise Grant, and undertaking the, the climate action plan. I mean, I think it's great that we're finally doing a climate action plan. I think we're the last city in San Mateo County to do one, but it is kind of a complex process, and it's not just setting goals and objectives, it's actually taking time to inventory the greenhouse gas emissions being produced by existing uses. So all three of those things are going to shape, you know, where we locate development, where we can put infrastructure, where housing canon cannot be. So it concerns me that we're, you know, looking at scenario development and creating alternatives, works, workbooks, before we've actually completed these building blocks that are going to inform and shape the general plan update. And I, I think that, I agree with the public that neighborhood meetings ought to happen as soon as possible, and I don't think we should take concepts to these meetings. I think, you know, people who live in existing neighborhoods are stakeholders too, and it kind of rubs me the wrong way that it seems like we're only treating people who are stakeholders who own undeveloped property. I sense that from some of the speakers here, but I sense that being built into some of the documents as well. The general plan is not just a blueprint for new developments, it's also about how, how do we manage our existing neighborhoods and, and the way we live, and how do we change our vision as new needs arise? So I think neighborhood meetings right off are very important. I'm very concerned at this, you know, this complex approach on this very fast timeline when we know that the council has already directed staff to undertake priority projects, you know, that we, we looked at this at the retreat, what are we going to do this coming year? We know staff is really busy. You know, I don't understand how staff expects to meet these proposed timelines in your work program with all these other things you have going on. So I think we would want to know, what are the dependencies here? Who's going to do what? Just looking at the staff report, it looks to me like a giant outsourced project that's going to cost us a lot of money with this consultant before we actually get the, you know, the basic information we need to formulate a realistic plan. So I would want to know, how does staff expect to, you know, manage this along with their, their current workload? And I would expect if we're considering modifying our, our general plan work program, that we, you know, can see the consultant contract, look at the existing tasks, what might need to be changed, what are the budget implications, do we need more money, that sort of thing? So we're missing the staffing piece, the, the workflow piece, and we're missing, you know, sort of the, the existing contract and potential budget piece. So I'm really concerned about that, too. And you, you may have answers for all these things, and I'm happy to, to listen to them. There were a couple of other things I wanted to mention, though. I think that the, as far as I know, I'm not totally familiar with Connect the Coastside, but I know that they are relying on data that, you know, for development that's in our existing, you know, land use plan local coastal program. So that means the, the most development that can occur on PUDs, for example. So I don't know why we'd want to integrate data based on our existing land use plan conditions before we have a chance to figure out, you know, where we're going. So, you know, that, that plan might be a piece that we consider as we put together the general plan, but I don't see it driving it. I certainly wouldn't want a county effort, you know, driving our general plan, especially when, you know, the neighborhoods haven't had a chance, you know, to weigh in. And I would also like to add that I think the council needs to, you know, treat the, the public outreach that's going to be involved as, as a policy decision and not leave it up to the consultant or the G-PAC. I don't think the G-PAC, you know, for all the great people that are on there, I haven't seen much outreach so far from the G-PAC to the general public. I, I think they might make great ambassadors. I don't think they've been given that direction. It seems to me, you know, to date, that, that the consultant is pushing the data at the G-PAC. I might be wrong about that, I'd like to hear, I'm open to, you know, different opinions, but... I'd like to hear, I'm open to, you know, different opinions, but I think the council needs to set the direction in terms of what the outreach is going to be. So basically, I'm saying, don't go any farther until we get our baseline data all together, the cap, the Sea Level Rise Report, and the environmental constraints mapping. And my basic direction would be this. I'm just going to go right to it, and that is, to reiterate, put on hold any further development of expenditures on land use plan concepts and preferred plan and key policies while baseline data is gathered and aggregated and we have a chance to review it. Complete the natural resources, environmental constraints, and Sea Level Rise mapping and commence preparation of the Climate Action Plan. Organize individual neighborhood meetings to get input from the neighborhoods for the community vision and identify neighborhood issues. No concept presented at this time other than maybe the guiding principles and some of the work that the G-PAC has developed. I would hold community workshops as needed to introduce and get input on the baseline data and cap, and I would enlist G-PAC and council members to attend the neighborhood meetings. Then I would return to the G-PAC and council with the baseline data reports and neighborhood input for further direction and development of the land use plan alternative or alternatives and community outreach planning. To me, that is the process that will get us further along to a general plan that has the, you know, buy-in from the public and the stakeholders, rather than doing all these multiple, you know, initiatives at once. It's mind-boggling, and I think it ultimately will discourage input and participation. And, you know, frankly, I don't see the rush to achieve, you know, consistency and timing and potentially content with the county's efforts. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about the work program.
Thank you for your comments on that. You know, and personally, I think when we brought it back last week, because I was a bit confused with some things, and let's bring it back, and Councilmember Mueller brought up a couple of different things, so we pulled it down. We've got to make it so it's not confusing for us and then certainly not confusing for the public, and maybe it's one teeny thing at a time. I thought narrowing it down to a couple of things was helpful, because it's a lot of work and we're not in a rush, right? And definitely, I think the open space and the sea level are important, too. But staff, maybe you want to respond to some comments that Councilmember Riddick has made in Mogda as far as staffing or anything. And just, I think the core thing is, what can we handle? I mean, besides the technical things that were asked.
So a lot of the background work was done through the existing conditions report. A lot of the mapping of resources, hazards, and constraints was documented and, as I stated earlier, has been on the street for about eight months. We've also done economic trend analysis, and that report is available. The Sea Level Rise, as, you know, some of you may know, it has not, the analysis or the report has not been adopted yet. We have an agreement, and we've been working with the Coastal Commission, to integrate that analysis into all of our policies. If we go the direction that we're recommending tonight, that analysis can come concurrently because we're not looking at any land use changes or doing anything in the vulnerable areas where Sea Level Rise would impact. To get to a climate action plan, it's true, you need baseline data and information. And we would like to, you know, work with the community in starting to develop a lot of that, a lot of those things. Staff time, this is really, everything that we've presented does not require any additional money. Staff intended to actually handle a lot of the neighborhood meetings that we would have with constituents, having the four larger kind of community workshops. It doesn't really alter the plan that we signed on for with Dietne Batia. And if you essentially look at the slide that was presented in the presentation, the phase of developing concepts that address concerns, basically, if you direct it such, it would take care of this phase. Instead of three separate concepts with a lot of changes in different areas, the only thing that would be up for discussion in terms of land use is a very concentrated, focused area and no other land use changes. And it still keeps us in line for what we paid for and the schedule. So there wouldn't be any undue burden on staff to get that done.
Well, at the very least, I think you would want to take, without doing any more work and refining concepts, take what you have, use it as a straw man, take it into the neighborhoods, and let people respond. I don't quite like that idea, because I'd rather have people just tell us without being predisposed by us to look at things a certain way, but at least you could have people responding to it. And it might be, take less time. But I think, I just don't see spending any more time on concept development before you go to the neighborhoods. I think that's critical.
And we definitely can do that. When we created existing conditions, we had G-PAC meetings, a lot of G-PAC members, and also members from the public pointed out areas, well, you made a mistake here, this should be designated a sensitive habitat area. We verified it and we made corrections. So it's been a work in progress, you know, for the last eight, nine months. We'd be happy to go out to the community and present it again.
I think what you need, what we need is the biological mapping, the natural resources mapping. And I think you need to identify not just existing conditions, but constraints. What constrains what we can do? So you actually call the deliverable, you know, existing conditions, constraints, and opportunities, so that people understand, you know, Sea Level Rise or the existence of ESHA is going to determine, you know, the development footprint, right? I don't think that's become clear. We have an existing conditions workbook, but, you know, it doesn't have biological overlays so that people actually can see where can you build and where can't you build. And I don't think we've done that yet. I think Sea Level Rise is going to affect that, especially in low-lying areas like Miramar and the sewer plant, and Casa del Mar actually is quite low as well. And then reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We have targets set by the state, and that's going to determine where development happens. And granted, right now, we're looking at the core, which is probably the area that's going to reduce greenhouse gas and emissions the most, but, you know, we don't have that data, and the public can't see it to arrive in understanding of what has to be the foundation for a new vision for our community.
Madam Councilmember, this may help, and Dante just kind of cued me to weigh in here, but the existing conditions report was one of the topics at the second or third G-PAC meeting, as Dante indicated about eight months ago. The sensitive habitat areas have been mapped. They were also appended to the existing conditions report that's on the website with the previous addendum from before. So we had a series of comments when it was first released eight or nine months ago. Then we had, this was in response to those, and those were published last month of the month before last. So that information does exist. And I might be helpful to add that that is in the next segment of work that we're talking. So that information is relevant, it's current, and we were planning, as scheduled, to roll out with that and go to the communities and have these conversations in the next month or two, and that's what's identified in the work program.
And what's the biological work that's being completed now?
Actually, there isn't anymore. The biological work is working with the community to kind of go through this public education process about what these maps are, interpreting the maps, and then hopefully focusing in on the policy discussions of how the city would like to, what our position is relative to those environmental policies. But the technical mapping has been completed and is appended to the existing conditions report.
I was just confused, because there's a statement in the staff report that says the biological work will be done within the month. So I was just wondering what that was.
That means rolling out the program to meet with the stakeholders, there is no more mapping. The Sea Level Rise analysis will continue, as will some of the, we will continue to update, revise, and correct these maps up until the moment this plan is ultimately adopted. So it doesn't end. We will continue to refine the accuracy of the plan documents all the way throughout the process. The Sea Level Rise analysis is occurring on a parallel track, and as Dante indicated, those standards haven't been developed yet by the state, even though we've been funded through there. But we're moving forward with the direction that we have thus far in completing the analysis, and that's identified in your schedule to be completed within the next two to four months. But that's been underway also. So anyway, a lot of these things, I think, maybe that's part of the communication that you're speaking about, is it's really kind of occurring and has been occurring. It's just some of the tensions kind of got distorted into concepts that were presented when it was really detracted from the areas that we wanted to get more feedback on, like existing conditions eight months ago.
Well, I just want to reiterate, my point is, finish the cap, the Sea Level Rise study, pull all the biological work together, and, you know, go to the neighborhoods. Don't spend money on further iterations of concepts. Don't integrate with Connect the Coast side until we know where we're going and we can take a look and see what they have and see if it fits with our vision. Again, I don't want to have that drive our schedule or drive the data we include in our LUP and LCP. So that's, folks, where I'm coming from, and I'll shut up at this point.
Thank you. And I think that part of this that's a really good discussion is, is the communication, and I think we need to listen to this really well with the confusion of what's out there. And it looks like you've done so much of that work and some of these things being addressed. And I think we've really got to pay attention to this, because things are being put out there that we're doing that is not really happening, and you're starting to do some work, but yet it's not presented. I think we've talked about having a lot of community meetings. You're planning them, but they're not out in the public yet. So I think these are key things that we have to look at, because otherwise, there is this expectation that all kinds of different things are happening when actually it's not really happening.
Thank you. If I can just chime in a little bit, the whole purpose of bringing this item today is to get these comments. Because if you recall, the discussion, frankly, that the council had last time was pretty vague, and they were sort of, I think each of you had different ideas of what that might look like. So we were doing a little bit of mind-reading. We were looking, trying to understand exactly what the interest was from each of you and based on what we know needs to happen. So we're putting something before you for you to react to. And similarly, when we go out to the community, it's always best to have something for the community to react to. Now, it doesn't have to be a concept that's well-developed, but if you just go over there with an open piece of paper, it's not going to be very productive. I just want to comment a couple of things. In terms of the stakeholders, stakeholders for us, and I know stakeholders, I think, here in Half Moon Bay might have a little bit different connotation than other places, but stakeholders means everybody. Homeowner, not homeowner, renter, property owner, live here. Stakeholders by, for me, by definition, means everybody. So let me just say, everybody for us is who we're going to be reaching out to. I don't make these, we don't make these distinctions. The Connect the Coast is not going to drive our process. It will not drive our process. If there's information there available, we should take advantage of that information. And if it works for us, great. If it doesn't, great. But it's not going to drive our process. And so I'd like to hear from the rest of the council members as well, because we're trying to get direction. That's the whole point of this exercise. We don't have, we're not going to, we're trying to advocate for what we think is best for the community and what's realistic for the community, understanding that frankly, we're very understaffed. But we're trying to do the best that we can for this community and get this information out. If the council would like us to slow down, which is what I'm hearing, at least from one council member, that's okay. And the information right now, we're in a bit of an odd place, because we don't have direction yet in terms of what to do next. So we're sort of there in the old stuff, but we're not going to use it, and we know that. But we don't have direction in terms of where we're going. So once we have a little more clarity today, yes, we're going to do a better job of trying to get that, not better job, a good job of getting that information out. But we're a bit in a holding pattern right now, which, again, is the whole point of this discussion.
Thank you for all you're doing.
Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I think, let's be fair to staff regarding this item. The intent was really to get a grip on it and to be honest about what we can really get done and how long it's going to take to get done without failing. I believe general plans failed an awful lot of times throughout the state of California. So at least, we're trying, and I think staff has been working very hard to try to refocus on what they can get done and what can be accomplished, one step at a time. And when you're talking about Connect the Coast side, please, the coast side is coming through Half Moon Bay. We're not going to be there making policy about it, but we have to be aware of what's coming down the road, really and truly. Look at Highway One every night, every day, every morning. I believe with the tunnel and also with the new bridge in Pacifica, we're going to see 25%, 30% increase in traffic. The Bay Area is full of traffic. It takes you hours to go anywhere. So you've got to at least be aware of Connect the Coast side. I know nobody wants them coming through, but it's a fact, it's going to be coming through. So I think to be fair to staff, we have to just give them that few directions to see if we can get that accomplished. It's listed out there how they're going to meet with the community, but we need to let the community know when and how they're going to do it. If there's a big fluff about the G-PAC committee, then we have to review that and see if there needs to be some adjustments there, for sure, on that. And, you know, I'll be honest with you, and you well know about litigation that's happened with property owners. They deserve a right to be heard, number one, and number two, you're going to take their property, someone's going to have to pay for it down the road, because we all know those lots out there have been there for generations, and I've been looking at a history book. And let me tell you, I'm sure other property owners that have their property, they sure wouldn't have wanted someone to go up there and designate them whatever. So I think we have to be sensitive to the future of those property owners, because that's an asset their families have had for 50, 60, 30, 40 years, whatever, and you just can't ignore it. It'll have to come up somewhere down the way. Otherwise, that's potential litigation, in my opinion, for future councils. And I'm not recommending it, but I think that there is that possibility. So I really believe that hopefully, the agenda item tonight was to give them an idea of exactly what the council, the majority of the council is willing to share with them, and at least get something that can be completed, or at least show that it's getting towards completion and not just letting it fall off on the wayside. Because if we start picking and knocking things off, you'll have no general plan. You're just going to have a plan. And so that's just, I think that was our intent a month ago or so, to get something on the table to get moved forward. And if we have things out there already, then it has to come back to the council and we can see what's there or to the public. And I think that's the important thing, is to be honest with staff about what they can really get done and afford to get done.
Thank you. Councilmember Penrose.
Yeah. I'd like to look at this the same as a lot of the council members would, from the point of view of the general public, and that is the confusion that exists. I'm still confused. I'm very confused by the timeline. I'm a little disturbed at the idea of things going along in parallel. I would like to see an environmental map presented to us at council before we take it to the general public, so that we can look and evaluate it and put our ideas toward it, and have that map also include things like green gas, greenhouse gas emissions, green gas emissions, and Sea Level Rise. If we have those elements, then we can draw a map, and we can take the map and the then we can draw a map, and we can take the map and the, to the communities, and, and the neighborhoods can look at it and say, well, gee, I can see now what I can and I can't do, as, as Councilwoman Ruddock said, are constraints and are opportunities. So I would like to keep it simple. And I'd like to see us do those three things, and limit ourselves to those three things, until, and have us, the council, presented with those three things. Then we take that out to the community, and get feedback from them. Is that clear?
Council Vice Mayor Qualtich.
Thank you. So I respectfully disagree with the suggestion of a linear path. I think our staff is more than capable to walk and chew gum at the same time. Thus, a, a parallel path can be appropriate. It's not always appropriate, but certainly can be appropriate. I'd like to understand what the specific next steps are. I appreciate the comments from Councilmember Ruddock regarding getting the community input sooner rather than later. That may already be part of the plan, actually, not certain what the specific next steps are. And getting that, getting that sooner rather than later, I think that, that's a wise, a wise step. And it also is, I think, consistent with what we've been saying, is meet with, go to the neighborhoods, get that input. I do think you have to start with something, a stake in the ground, move the stake where it needs to be, versus a clean sheet. It's just, it's just too broad. So, I got a couple of comments, but my question will be, you know, as, as suggested tonight, what are the immediate next steps, as, from where we were? Let me understand that. As you kind of collect your thoughts, I have a couple more comments. Connect the Coast, this is where we get in trouble, right? Connect the Coast, county effort. Our roads do not exist independently. They're all integrated. Something we change will affect the North Coast, something they change will affect us. It's all a whole dynamic. And the, I forgot who said it, but a couple of times I heard, we are integrating Connect the Coast, and Connect the Coast is driving our plan. I didn't see that anywhere. It's, Connect the Coast is, is a county-wide effort. We should be aware of it. We should, it should be a key, an input, if not a key input to the process, because it's, it's getting lots of input from the community, from the midcoast, that we should be aware of. We have to understand that. I think that's wise to do that, and to ignore it, I think would be foolish. And for the, there's some other comments regarding the G-PAC members. The council did not choose the G-PAC members. We did not choose the, it's not like Planning Commission, or Parks and Rec, where we have designees. We, I forget the makeup, but we said we want somebody who's in real estate, somebody who's an environmentalist, whatever the whole breakdown is. And then we, the, the community applied. The community applied, and, and I think a subcommittee, a subcommittee chose, nominated them, and then we, we put them through. So if we need to revisit the representation, I think it's, it's not the who, it's do we have all the right areas represented? And I think we did. I don't know what area is not represented. So those are my comments. And I, I think if the next steps are to get community input to the not, things we are not calling concepts or maps, but we're going to call something, I think that's the right next step. But I'd like to hear where, where staff, staff is. Thank you, Council Vice Mayor.
In your presentation, we also included a little schedule of deliverables and meetings. And so what we see as the next step, if our council agrees with this direction, we, we have some preliminary, a preliminary engagement, public engagement plan. We would like to solicit input from the G-PAC, and also partnership. One of the conversations we had today with Coastside Land Trust was to partner, to help educate people on the importance of open space, potentially do some move-about tours, and, and have people really understand why we want to protect this important resource. So our plan is to solicit them, and for them to be ambassadors of that. Then we would release, like I said, these concepts, or whatever we're calling them, that would be modest growth, only in the downtown, and nowhere else, and then kind of have those compared against the general plan, so the community's kind of educated on some of the issues. We would do press releases, newsletters. We also want to meet with some of the stakeholders to talk a little bit about the framework. And so the framework is just kind of the, the logical structure that you can develop and insert kind of policy. Once we do that, from the end of April, all the way through September, we intend to have multiple workshops. There will be workshops that we anticipate will be interactive, that have to do with open space. One focus of the community workshop will be transportation, and so forth and so on. So that process will be throughout, you know, April to September. Then we want to come back to the city council, the Planning Commission, and say, here's what we learned through that entire process, and then work to develop whatever this preferred plan will be, and integrate some of the climate action plan.
Vice Mayor Qualtich.
Thank you. Thank you, Dante, for reviewing that. And so, going back to this chart, if the, so the immediate, the March steps are to confer with the G-PAC team about the community input plans, and then neighborhood stakeholder meetings, move-about tours, those things. Those things, I think, are, are critical. I guess, I like that. I, I, so I'm comfortable with that, that process, because it gets out into the neighborhoods soon. But I'd like to ask Councilmember Ruddock, what is missing from that, that I may be missing in this?
I don't want to work off of that timeline. I, I feel like we just gave input, and I feel like staff has gone back, and now they're wedded to the, you know, the process that they submitted tonight. So I, I'm not happy with the processes outlined in the staff report.
So may, may I ask, what do you recommend?
Maybe if we could go back to the, the PowerPoint frame that had the, the building blocks, that might be helpful, and I can explain to you.
What's that, the hierarchy?
The hierarchy. So, community visioning. Now, to me, that is community outreach, and not just the G-PAC, but it means going to the neighborhoods and having neighborhood meetings. And so you're identifying issues, not just, you know, by the seat of our pants, but you're actually identifying issues that are important, you know, to the neighborhoods, individual neighborhoods, because our neighborhoods are very different. They have different issues and needs. So I see the community visioning and identifying issues, you know, to be the first step. I, I noticed that you have developed concepts that address concerns third, but I think you need to have, develop goals, objectives, and policies, not based on the preferred concept, but based on the existing conditions and the community input that you've received. So I have problems with your hierarchy, basically. So...
Can you repeat that, councilmember? I'm sorry, I just didn't get the last part of what you said.
So, my hierarchy would be community visioning, but that's, you know, the neighborhood meetings, the G-PAC meetings, maybe you're talking to some of the property owners, but you're, you're doing extensive, broad-based community input. The visioning happens, you know, after you identify the issues and the opportunities and threats. You can't develop a vision until you understand the existing conditions and the constraints. From that, you can develop opportunities. And from there, you can, you know, develop goals, objectives, et cetera, that sort of address the issues that you raise from your stakeholder outreach. And then from there, you can develop concepts, and from there, ultimately, a preferred plan. So I, I think the hierarchy doesn't really reflect the sort of foundational community building that I'd like to see. And I think we're still in the community visioning phase, which I would actually rather call the community outreach phase, and we need to get out into the neighborhoods, like, right away. So, that's my ideal hierarchy.
So, and, and just in general response, the, the figure or the diagram doesn't really illustrate what I was saying before, that it's not truly a linear process, that you have to complete one phase before starting the, the next phase. The community visioning process, the result of that were the guiding principles, that were adopted by the council, Planning Commission. And as far as we've heard, not, no one in the community says that they don't agree with that. And so we're using that as kind of the vision of, of what we're going for. Identify the issues, opportunities, and threats. Like we said before, it's been on, on the street for eight months, that identify all of the environmental hazards, the overlay of environmentally sensitive habitat areas, all of the things that we've mentioned tonight. And we would be happy to present that. We thought we had done a good job in asking for comments, and we, we've made comments where we've gotten them. But we'll be happy to continue to do that. The other things, I mean, it, it probably could change the order, but I guess the point is, these were kind of the major phases to get to the preferred plan.
Well, I would like to see neighborhood meetings right away. I don't see any point in further, you know, development of plans and spending money until you've gone out and talked to the individual neighborhoods. Talking to the G-PAC is not enough. And it has to happen, like, right away. So...
So just so, let me see if I can get this. It looks like if we're looking at this slide, the bottom, the first two on the bottom have been done. So those are done. It sounds like Councilmember Ruddock is recommending that, instead of develop concepts, that we add another box that goes out to the community, and again, goes back and shares in the issues, opportunities, and threats. Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes, the neighborhood piece is missing. And before we go into more concept development and development of a single preferred concept, you need to hear from the neighborhoods.
So it sounds like we've done that, however, perhaps...
Well, well, I guess I, I would just ask, and the goal of doing that would be to ask, do we have it correct? Do you have any changes? What, what's the goal?
To ask the neighborhoods, what are their concerns, whether it's traffic, need for parks, noise, hazards, whatever it is. You want to get neighborhood input into a vision, and not just for their neighborhood, but for the community. They're, they are stakeholders too. They live here. They might not all, you know, work here, but they live here, they sleep here, they own property, they play, they pay property taxes. And talking to the G-PAC is not enough. You have to go out into the community and get their input. And frankly, people might be happy with our very broad guiding principles, but I know, I've been at meetings and heard, where, and there's, there's a group that has been very vocal about it. They're not happy about the implementation and the terms of scenario development. They don't feel like the current scenarios reflect the guiding principles. So you, you said that, well, nobody's, you know, criticized the, the guiding principles. Maybe not, but they're not happy with the concept development, because they don't feel it reflects the guiding principles. I just want, you know...
Through the mayor. So, again, I'll go back to this. Are, are not neighborhood stakeholder meetings among the immediate next things that, I'm sorry, Dante, I'm referring to this, the, the timeline or the schedule, are not neighborhood and stakeholder meetings among the immediate next steps? And I think, as what you're saying, Councilmember Ruddock, that let's go out and get input with what we have, don't spend more effort polishing it, changing it, and get input on wherever we are right now through the stakeholder, through the neighborhood meetings. Is that what you're suggesting?
Get out into the neighborhoods before we refine any more concepts. And if you want to take the downtown core that we already have, you know, and use it as a, you know, a straw man for people to respond to and react to, you know, fine. That would be fine. Give them something to react to. I can, I can agree with that. But, but reach out to the community, go where they live, and find out what their needs and concerns are. You can't expect them to just come to meetings. This is too important for that.
So again, trying to get direction here. I'm just trying to understand. If we look at the, this one, are you perhaps suggesting, pardon me, I'm sorry, are you perhaps suggesting that the deliverables portion, the top portion of that timeline, where it says land-use concepts for downtown, get moved, perhaps to the end of April or beginning of May, such that we have conducted some of the neighborhood and stakeholder meetings? That's on the bottom part of the meetings.
So, through the mayor, if I may, so...
Go ahead.
So, is the suggestion, and trying to...
Just trying to understand.
I'm trying to do the same thing. Really, can we pull up the calendar on the overhead? The, is, the suggestion might be that, well, my work is essentially shifting the top row, the top of the chart, to the right, to follow G-PAC meeting to get input on community input plans, and neighborhood stake, stakeholder meetings. So if you see on the, the top row, all the deliverables, right?
Hang on a minute.
Okay, sorry. So if, so I'm, I'm trying to find common ground, and, and Councilmember Ruddock, I'm, that common ground is the ground near you. So what I, what I'm suggesting is perhaps shifting the top row of deliverables, and the timing for the development of them to follow the, the, the first two items on the bottom row, so that the stakeholder meetings happen as a, they precede those other, that other work.
And, and I could agree with that, too. And my question is, do you want to take the community meetings out a little further? You know, say, for instance, we have, we have farmers' markets starting in, in May. That, that's another opportunity. I know we've talked about attending farmers' markets, talk about city things. So if, if you need to, since we're not saying you have to rush through this, if, if you feel you want to stretch that community outreach a little longer...
Sure, we, we can do that.
I think that would be helpful, instead of, you know, trying to cram them all over the place, because I think as you start opening up this spring, there's some more opportunities in some more public events, that you could be there, getting input as well as going out to the communities. Councilmember Penrose?
Yes. I, I think that, I think shifting of the deliverables makes sense, with the exception of the sea level rise analysis and the climate action plan. I think those things are critically important and should be done in parallel. Thank you.
I like that.
Thank you, that's good.
We like that.
We like that.
We agree.
I just want a very brief answer from fellow councilmember Ruddock here, very brief. Is, is, so when you want to have these community meetings, or we want to have these community meetings, you don't want to bring any of the work that has been completed so far? You want to kind of start fresh and make snap, reinvent the wheel, that the work they've done? I, I just need a yes or no.
Well, for instance, I would not create an alternative workbook to bring to the neighborhood meetings, right? I might bring the one concept that we agreed to focus on. It's a map. And, but the, the point of the neighborhood meetings is to, you know, get some authentic input about, you know, what their issues are. Let them respond to the one, you know, scenario. And that gives you information about what they like, what they don't like. You might get different responses from different neighborhoods... You might get different responses from different neighborhoods, and then we can synthesize that. But I wouldn't, like, create a lot of new extra handouts that looks like promotional materials for the neighborhood meetings. I would take some basic information that might help them focus their comments, but not, like, overload them with marketing data, I guess is what I'm saying.
When you say the one concept, I'm not sure I understand what you were referring to.
Well, I thought that we had decided the last meeting, we were going to focus on the downtown core scenario. In other words, not have three different concepts flying around, but take one, so that people could at least focus, use that to focus on some basic issues, you know, the transportation...
Use that to get reactions, but just use the one and perhaps focus, just perhaps peel off the things around and only focus on the downtown.
Well, we'll use the map that we called the downtown core, so that people can see what that means, and let them, you know, react to it. But let them also say, here's what we need, here's what's going on in my neighborhood, here's what I don't like, here's what works, here's what I would like to be able to do.
Memory is a short answer.
Right.
So...
Thanks for indulging me, thanks for indulging me.
And I definitely hear that in those comments. The workbook, for instance, is just a tool that people can take away with them, they can read, they can digest, they can kind of understand in words and narrative how we're, what the different concepts are trying to do. So, I'm not sure if producing the workbook hinders people from commenting at the meeting. In my, in our mind, it may provide them or prepare them a little bit more to talk about issues if they had a workbook explaining the concept.
And can you clarify what's in the workbook? So, could it be something that lists out things that, it's trails, there's different roads, you're just, all kinds of things, so a person could pick and choose, a neighborhood could pick and choose what they would like? In that, is that what you're suggesting, and explains?
Well, and it won't be an extensive workbook, because we're not talking about a lot of land use changes, so maybe it's a pamphlet. And in the pamphlet, we'll talk about, here's what the existing plan, and a specific plan for the downtown area tells us, this is our plan. Here's a concept that speaks to what the community has said through, you know, over the last couple of months for the downtown, and it compares the two, how much parkland, if we're talking about parkland, how much housing, in the downtown only, essentially. So, it essentially provides you with metrics so that you can evaluate, you know, which option is best, or ask more questions about the options or the elements that are presented.
I'd like to try to summarize what I think I'm hearing as direction, and then yell at me when I'm wrong. So, and by the way, Dante and staff, thank you very much for your hard work. I know it's, you put a lot of effort into this, and getting this herd of cats in the same direction is not always easy. So, the direction I'm hearing from council, again, for comment or approval, is to shift all the top elements on the schedule out to happen after community stakeholder meetings, after the first two items on the bottom, which is input to community meetings and stakeholder meetings, and perhaps having additional, extending more likely stakeholder meetings, because we are not in a rush, but not shifting out C-level rise analysis or climate action plan. And in those stakeholder meetings, what I'm hearing is to bring one concept, dare I say it, for common input related to the downtown core, but to not limit the input to those meetings, to in fact get input on the downtown core, and additionally get input on, from the neighborhoods on their issues and their needs, which may not apply to the downtown core, but is critical for us to have and understand going forward.
Yeah, I think that's pretty good, and I think we're going to find people saying, gee, nobody ever asked me before what I think, you know? So I think, I think the neighborhood meetings will be, you know, a really good thing. I think you'll get a lot of positive feedback from people doing that, so yeah. Thank you for the summary.
Well, good, and council, thank you for discussion, and, yes, so she who's trying to understand has to ask another question. Does that also mean, then, this line at the bottom, looking at the same chart, one that's up there? So the line at the bottom that shows the meetings that we're holding, that's kind of a, you know, continuum there, does that, the shifting of the deliverables on the top, does it then necessitate yet another similar bar after the concept has been developed?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
I just want to be sure, because that, we just need to program that into what we are doing, because...
And we'll have to amend the schedule, because it's another...
Amend the schedule, but we're adding yet, we're not going to duplicate this bar after the concept has been developed.
Right, right, that's correct. And I think what you've heard from everyone is, we don't have to rush to this.
That's correct.
So, as you're coming back, you can pull this out a little further.
Yes, okay.
All right.
I just would like to add that I spoke to Kellex Nelson at the RCD, who expressed interest in, if everybody was interested, having a workshop just on agriculture on the coast side, you know, what are the existing ag lands, what are the needed, you know, agricultural output, you know, for food, et cetera. She'd be happy to maybe give us a presentation or lead a workshop or whatever, but if you wanted something devoted to agriculture, RCD would be happy to help. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, and I think they're coming in the next month or so to give a short presentation, but if a more expanded thing, I would like to see with Farm Bureau and some other people in those areas for another time, so. Council, thank you for this discussion, and thanks to the public for hanging in here, but don't go, because the last item is the best item of the night. And staff, thank you so much for all your hard work and enduring through this. I know this was, it's difficult, it's complex, and we're probably going to take a five-minute break, because they have to change the tape. So, please stay, we've got good stuff about the bridge. So, staff, we're good? We've ended this discussion now? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break while the... All right, thank you, we reconvened, it's now 10:32. And for our last item of the evening, and this will be of great interest for everyone, this is regarding the Pillar Cedar's Creek pedestrian bridge replacement. And who is presenting this this evening?
I'll present this this evening, mayor, members of the city council. As you know, staff has been working closely with the city attorney's office and also legal counsel for state parks, and tonight, next slide, we're looking for you to approve by resolution a cooperative agreement between the city and parks for the permitting, funding of Pillar Cedar's Creek Bridge, subject to any of city councils' revisions to the agreement. Next slide. Just a bit of background, been closed since April. State Parks has committed up to 1.8 million for the replacement, and tonight is when we're going to be considering that agreement. Next slide. Some of the details in the agreement identify the city as a project manager for the bridge project. State Parks retains review and comment authority, and we have regular meetings with all of our partners, state parks, regulatory agencies, and also some of our political people about the progress on a regular basis. The agreement also says that the state accepts the maintenance of the new bridge, and we have stressed that that is an important component for the community, is the ongoing maintenance of this bridge. The agreement also says the city is obligated to pay for the costs that exceed the available funding, and that's one of the policy questions we're asking you tonight. And we got a last-minute request from the legal counsel for state parks that added the condition that prior to any onsite construction activities, the city shall obtain all the necessary permits, and the city will be responsible for any delay cost, you know, such as storage costs for storing the bridge, if we fabricate the bridge, the bridge arrives, and we haven't received all of the other permits. The agreement says that the city is responsible for that.
Well, that's...
Yes, it's coming up. So, next slide. The policy issues and questions that we're asking you is, should the city accept the risk of committing general fund revenue to construct the project if the current estimates exceed funds allocated? We've done a lot of work in trying to really get down to what the real estimate is. We've worked with fabricators, engineers, we've talked to a lot of people. So, we feel really good about our numbers, but we really won't quite know until we open bids, and that's, that's the reality of it. So that's the number-one policy question. The other one is, should the city provide plan check, inspection, and management services as an in-kind contribution? And this issue is related to the fact that out of the 1.8 million, the state is actually paying their staff for review of the bridge project out of that, out of that amount. The next steps, after council kind of considers this, we're looking for the completion of the final design. Thank you. We want to prepare and release the bid package. We've already been talking to our permitting agencies about our permits, so we think we have some alignment. We want to award the contract and then commence construction. And the next slide kind of details a little bit of kind of our timing. We hope to begin construction in August, and October 15th is when we will complete the work in any of the creeks or any of the environmentally sensitive habitat areas. In consultation with some of the permitting agencies, we will be allowed to do some work, limited, very limited work, on the superstructure, but we have to mitigate any conditions or any things that may disturb some of the natural habitat area. And so, we would like to give ourselves a little bit of time to actually reopen the bridge. We're saying December 2015, but it may be before that, but we would like to give ourselves a little bit more time, just to kind of make sure everything is buttoned up. And the last slide is just the requested action, and subject to any minor revisions as approved by the city manager and city attorney. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can we create a timeline, working backwards from the middle of October, so all these other agencies can really see that we're pushing this? We can't have this go to the next year, and we are doing all we can. And you've got all those permits in process, and I know we've contacted our federal representatives and our state. Senator Hill and Assemblyman Gordon have been fantastic. We had met with their aides and the assistant director, or acting director of the state parks, and she obviously made some things happen with the legal agreement. And I think we've, you have to continue reaching out to these people, because otherwise, you know, they'll take their 200 days, they'll take their 300 days. And we want, we're doing everything we can, and I really want to thank staff, and particularly Alex, for all the work that you've done on this and Magda. You know, I'd like us to create a timeline from the middle of October and work backwards and really show these people, this is when they have to have it happen, because it's a hindrance to us that we can't start fabricating this bridge now, that we have to wait till all the permits, and it'll take four months, and then it's the crane to put it on top.
Well, actually, that was one of the last-minute revisions that we were talking about. Originally, they said that we had to wait until permitting was complete before we can even hire the contractor, fabricate the bridge. Now, the proposal is that all of the permits, permits need to be obtained before we start work or start construction. So, we can concurrently have the bridge fabricated, we can award the contract, hire the contractor, but they can't do any work until we obtain all the permits. And additionally, the state is saying that you can do that, but it has to be at your own risk. If there are any delays, you have to, like I said, store the bridge or what have you, that's going to be on your own cost, at your own cost.
Changes.
Right, or changes. So, we are able to actually move the process forward concurrently with getting the permits. So, we can, we can move the process of hiring the contractor, starting to fabricate the bridge, while the permits are being obtained. So it can run concurrently.
Okay, good. That was, that was a change from what I'd heard. Council, questions, comments?
Well, I think the main thing is, we committed to this months ago, and we're in with both feet, and so we can't pull toes out now.
On the road.
Yeah, our whole body's in this thing, and the community better realize that, whether we charge a toll or whatever to recoup our money to go across that bridge, but I think it's, again, it's a, it's a risk we have to take. We committed to this, and, you know, if we have to have fundraisers for the bridge, maybe we'll have to do that if things get out of hand, but I want to continue the process as quickly as process, if there's recommendation here.
And we have all the money, so that's not an issue right now? That's not an issue?
Right.
It is an issue.
We have the money?
That's correct.
So, okay, so somebody's saying, no, we don't have the money. Clarify this now.
So the question number one is, if I, if I may.
I want somebody to answer this.
So, so there is 1.8 million dollars from the state for the bridge. The question is, should the city accept the risk if the costs exceed 1.8 million dollars? Then that's the money we haven't designated. The 1.8 for the bridge, we think we have the money, but should there be cost overruns, and the bridge costs 1.9, then we're in for 100 grand. The bridge costs 2.8, then we're in for a million. So, we're, we would be accepting responsibility for anything, any overages. And the question for staff, I have for staff, based on that, is how conservative is our estimate? And, so I guess two questions. How conservative is the estimate of 1.8 million dollars to construct the bridge? And if it's, I'll leave it at, just one question.
So, we did our estimate, and we added on a 15% contingency, and that brings us to 1.7.
Okay, so we have enough for a party. Okay. All right, maybe some cookies or something. The, so, so I think we should accept that risk, I think that's reasonable. We've, so we've worked hard, staff and council's worked hard to get this agreement, so I think we should accept that risk, and, but, we should manage costs really, really, really tightly, because they always overrun. 15% may sound like a lot, it's not, it's actually pretty thin for a construction project. One thing goes awry, and it could, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, well, I want to accept that risk, don't bring it in over 1.8. And then the other question in the staff report was, should the city provide plan check, inspection, and project management as in-kind contribution? Is that because the state's piece is being funded out of the 1.8, and ours would be separate? So we would not be reimbursed from that. be reimbursed from that? Would there be other grant monies that could reimburse us, or other monies that could reimburse us for that?
Right, yes. It is because the state are reimbursing, they're reimbursing their staff with the grant funds. If we put our cost, obviously, that increases the cost of the project. We have talked to the Coastal Conservancy about the $200,000 grant that they provided for just the preliminary pre-development cost. And there may be a possibility to return, because we will not be able to spend the entire $200,000 before we execute a contract with the state. And that was one of the conditions, was that the Conservancy grant is good up until the point that we execute an agreement with the state. But, they did say, you know, you could come back to us, and we would consider any additional cost.
So, based on that, wouldn't it, would it make more sense to not contribute city staff services as in-kind and include them in the cost of the project? And then if the cost of the project overruns, then we would pursue additional funds. Like, why would we just give it up from, on the front end? What's the rationale there?
So, you're saying including staff cost in the overall cost of the project?
I guess I want to understand, is there a good reason not to include it?
Well, you increase the cost of overall cost, and the opinion or the comments from the Coastal Commission, I'm sorry, from the Conservancy, they weren't really definite. It was kind of like, we'll consider it. So, you know, there still may be a risk that those costs may not be approved.
Okay, so if we put them into the project, and the project overruns a little, if they're $90,000, and the project overruns by $90,000, then we're still paying that, no matter what.
Right.
If we don't put them in the project, and the project comes in under by $90,000, we still are out $90,000.
Right.
So, I, maybe I'm missing a piece of the puzzle. Maybe it's the Conservancy puzzle.
No. We can definitely put it, put it into the cost. The only thing, excuse me, the only thing that the state is concerned about is that the city understands, they only have 1.8, you know, they don't care if you put the cost in or out, they'll give you a check for 1.8, and anything above that is the city's responsibility.
So, I would suggest we put the cost in, and if there's an overrun, we're eating it anyway. But if they come in under, then at least we get compensated. And, no pressure, but it really needs to come in under, right? We, no matter what we do, we have to drive that, manage that really, really tight.
We're working hard.
I know you are. Thank you. So, I would, my suggestion is that we accept responsibility financially, I'm sorry, that we accept the risk of the contractual commitment, but we, but for question one, and for question two, that we embed the cost, the city cost in the project, and then if there's an overrun, we either try to recoup that through the Conservancy, or we just have to eat it.
Dante alluded to the fact that we got this revision from the State Parks, I don't know, 4:00, 4:30 this afternoon with this new amendment. So, for me, that changes things a little bit, in the sense that we were going to wait for the permitting before we ordered the bridge. So, we can do it concurrent. However, if we don't get the permits in time, we have to store that which we have ordered, or if the permits come back with a requirement for the bridge to be slightly different. Now, I don't know how big of a risk that is. I'm not an engineer, I don't know anything about that. But if the permitting agencies say, yes, but you must do this change, and we've now ordered the bridge, that's an issue. So, that's a risk. And I don't know how big of a risk that is.
Right. And we've, we've kind of talked about this whole permitting issue. It's less of an issue because we're not replacing the substructure. So, there's only a certain width and length of superstructure that will fit on the footing. So, there shouldn't be a lot of, lot of change there. And like I said, we are working with all of the permitting agencies, and we're talking through it, you know. We're talking about materials. We're trying to align as much as possible what we're trying to do here. So, the risk of us ordering the bridge and, you know, us having to refabricate something different, at this point, I think it's a low risk, but, you know, it's something we wanted to make the council aware of, and, you know, look for direction on the risk.
Yeah, I think the timeline, as the mayor says, is very important. But I think with the permitting agencies, we just got to continue to stress that we're not relocating a location, it's going back into the same location. Come on, you know, let's be logical one time on a creek project. Well, I mean, off the record, but I'm just saying, on the record, I don't care. But I mean, come on, the whole coast of California enjoys, the population enjoys this location, you know. So, we got to hopefully show them some common sense.
And we do have some cards. We have a couple. Yeah. And so, I say, no, because Councilmember Reddick wanted to say something.
Wait until after the public comment.
I just, do we need to have a motion to extend the meeting by 15 minutes? Are we going to?
No, because we're going to get this out of here by 11 o'clock.
All right.
Yes. So, speakers, there's three of them. We want to be out of here by 11. We don't want to extend the meeting. So, Walter, you're up first, followed by John Hernandez and John Ollin.
I'll be very quick. Walter Sensing, resident of Half Moon Bay, for those who may not recognize me any longer. I, first of all, want to thank you again for spearheading this and taking the ball and running with it. I want to thank the city staff for the fantastic work they do, and thank you so much for your communication efforts, and I think you're doing a wonderful job. All of you. I mean, I just, I can't thank you enough. I would like to echo what Madam Mayor suggested with the timeline. I think shooting for the pumpkin festival would be an appropriate target. And it's a very important time for us, and to get that back in action, to help the flow of traffic and getting around will be a big help. And I think the key to getting the project done in the time that we're looking at and within budget, all hinges on the project plan and good project management. And I would finally like to say that offer that the Friends of the Bridge would be very happy to help in any way to help foster this process. Ask us, and we'll do what we can to help you. Shore up your resources in any way you need. We want to see this done as much as anybody does, and we're here for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Hernandez, followed by John Ollin.
John Hernandez, question, what material is the bridge going to be made out of? Dante?
Dante, you know, we don't answer from the podium.
Oh, okay. Getting your statement, talking about the Conservancy, for the 20-some-odd years I've been dealing with the Conservancy here in the Coastal Commission, they love us. And they obviously can't say, yes, we can give you some money if there's an overrun, but they will do everything they can if there is an overrun. They like us. They want it done. They want the trail to continue. So, I'm just adding that. I have faith in them. I think, you know, it's a gamble, and, or not a gamble. The override where the state, was that where they wanted some money for in-kind services? They really aggravate me sometimes. And you're thinking, we gave them this bridge 21 years ago, and now they, because maybe we pushed them into a corner, well, you're going to do this, you're going to do that. Again, I think they ought to step up and take care of it, and not burden us with that problem. And I think that's about it. Thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job, and I love you all for it. Thank you.
John Ollin.
Hey, I'm going as fast as I can here. I know we talked a little bit about MOUs recently, and I know you won't answer the question, but maybe you'll ask staff, is this the MOU, item number five, on this, where the state accepts to maintain the bridge? That appears to be the whole MOU for the agreement between the city and the state on this, especially when it mentions at the end of the contract that that is, everything in this contract is everything that's between the city and the state. So, that being the case, since the state is accepting maintenance for the bridge, John mentioned materials for the bridge, you really want to consider aluminum. You're going to want to push staff hard on this, because this, item number five, the state taking maintenance for the bridge, is really kind of a sloppy thing for the state to agree to, because they don't know what kind of bridge you're going to give them. You could give them a bridge that would cost hundreds of dollars a day to maintain, versus a bridge that doesn't cost hardly anything to maintain. And if they're going to go with like a painted solution with galvanized steel, something like that, you're going to have to take into account sand blasting, you're going to have to use water blasting to keep the thing clean every year or so, get the salt off of it. All those are going to require a lot of permitting, a lot of hassles. There's a lot of downstream costs involved. Now, I know the state is accepting that cost, but can you count on them to do that, to actually have the expertise and the funds to maintain the bridge properly? And it would be a yearly thing. It's not like you're going to wait 10 years and go out there and repaint it. To maintain a bridge is going to require someone go out there and sand blast it every year, or, sorry, sand blast, but at least power wash it every year. Any kind of stripped painting is going to require sand blasting. So, you want to really consider the maintenance of the bridge. Aluminum will give you a lot of solutions to that, and overall, it's relatively close to the same price to install, but has a lot of downstream benefits to how you have to pay to maintain it. And that would be it. Thanks.
Thank you. Dante?
Just briefly, to respond to the questions, the bridge will be made of aluminum. We actually had done a lot of work and analysis and recommended that to the state to lower their maintenance costs. And they took a little while, but they agreed to it. The aluminum bridge is a little less expensive, which will help our costs. And also, it can be fabricated in a little quicker time to kind of condense our timeline. So, we consider that a success.
Thank you, Dante. Council, any more questions?
I would just reiterate that I think the state, first of all, I want to say, I work for the Coastal Conservancy. I want to just disclose that, so everybody understands that. But I do believe that state agency would be working with the city too on any problems that might arise. I think we're pretty cooperative and work with you in good faith. So, I think that, I think accepting the risk is probably a good gambit. And I think I would maybe delay designating this in-kind. I know that a lot of larger cities as grantees donate in-kind staffing, you know, to the tune of maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars, but we're a small city. So, I agree with Vice Mayor Kowalczek that we do not make a decision about in-kind at this time.
All right. And if we could make a timeline and go backwards and then figure out what is our best opportunity before you order the bridge. And really, it puts the emphasis on the other permitting agencies. We've got great partnerships with the Coastal Conservancy for funding, and we know we'll put in extra if we have to, but it's these permits that are going to knock us down.
Permits?
Permits to get the fabrication going. Okay, great.
So, are you ready to entertain a motion? Then, I believe the recommendation is to move to consider approving by resolution a cooperative agreement between the city and the California Department of Park and Recreation, State Parks, for the permitting and funding of the Pillar Cedas Creek pedestrian bridge replacement project, subject to the City Council's direct revisions. So, move?
I'd like to second, but I want to point out that there is an error in the resolution that says California Coastal Commission instead of California Coastal Conservancy, and it's carried all the way through the document. So, you might want to just maybe approve the motion with the, with the spelling or the amendment to the language identifying the agency.
On page 61 under the resolution, I would agree for the change of, as a motion maker, to California Coastal Conservancy, not Commission.
And one final thing, any additional minor revisions that would be approved by the city manager and city attorney, consistent with your direction tonight.
All right, maker accepts that. All right. Thank you. And you're seconding?
I was going to actually make sure the motion includes clarification of the revisions, which is to embed the in-kind costs into the project.
Mm-hmm.
That's part of the motion, so it's clear.
Still need, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please. Aye.
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 Aye. And just noting that time's 11:01. Are we still legally good with that? We are. Okay. That clock's 30 seconds fast. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. And we'll see you on St. Patrick's Day.